Thank you.
You are live.
Thank you. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Township of West Orange Planning Board Meeting, June 5th, 2024 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Okay. Sorry, how to get my power source? Okay, the next regular planning board meeting will be held July 10th, 2024 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please, Yamalat.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Morgan, I see him in the public.
Okay. I don't see him, Jamlet is.
Is he raising his hands?
Okay. I got him.
Okay, well, Markham is here.
Mrs. Morado? Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Present.
Chairman Bagow?
Here.
And just for the record, Mr. Alfred and Mr. Mr. Wilkes will not be joining us tonight.
And Council President we're waiting for. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, to the minutes, I make a motion. Well, does anybody have any corrections or changes, additions or deletions to the two sat, two, uh, February 7, 2024 West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes? Seeing none, I make a motion, we adopt the February 7, 2024 West Orange Planning Board Minute Draft Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chairman Guarino, seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morado?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes, motion carries. February 20th, 2024 West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Does anybody have any corrections, deletions or additions? Seeing none, I make a motion, we approve the February 28th, 2024 West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Smoraldo, seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
That's Mr. Cardoza.
Uh, Mr. Cardoza, I'm sorry.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And you don't vote, Mr. Chairman, you were not there in the meeting.
Great, motion carries. The April 3rd, 2024 West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Does anybody have any corrections, additions or deletions? Seeing none, I make a motion, we approve the April 3rd, 2024 West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do I have a second?
Don't move.
Who moved?
Smoraldo.
Mr. Smoraldo moved, thank you.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
W F O.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morado?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes. I make a motion, we approve PB 23-12 L and B Realty Group LLC Draft Resolution with Conditions. May I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Guarino, seconds. Are there any additions, deletions? Or, uh, or changes to the, uh, resolution, draft resolution? Seeing none on the, on the app, on the resolution, Yamalat.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Morado?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes, motion carries. PB 24-03 Crystal Eagle Draft Resolution with Conditions. I make a motion, we approve. Second.
Second, Mr. Jim.
Mr. Cardoza? Yes, good, I got it. Are there any corrections, deletions or additions? Seeing none on the, on the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Morado?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in the Township Professionals, please?
Yes, um, Mr. Hazel and Mr. Hess. I'm looking for Mr. Hess. Okay, thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
Thank you.
Excellent. Application PB 24-02 Wonder Group INC Block 152.01 Lot 1445.01 Zone B2. This matter will be carried to the July 10, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. No additional notice will be required. PB 24-10 Green Essex Partners Urban Renewal Entity LLC Block 155 Lot 42-03 Zone Executive Drive Redevelopment Zone 1,000 Executive Drive Minor Subdivision with Variances. Just for the Board's edification before I call on Mr. Skolnick, the Attorney, and this is right out of the Planner's Report, just so you understand, there will be no public questions or comments. Uh, the application, the applicant proposes to subdivide a portion of the existing Block 155 Lot 42-03 and convey a portion of this property to the Township of West Orange. The parcel to be conveyed to the Township contains a fully constructed dog park. The subdivision, along with the conveyance, implements the prior agreement set forth in the March 10th, 2021 redevelopment agreement and discuss further in Condition 7, Page 6 of the May 5th, 2021 Planning Board Resolution. So this is basically cleaning up the remainder of the conveyance of land from one entity to the other. And for the applicant, Mr. Skolnick?
Good, Skolnick, on behalf of the applicant, Green Essex Partners Urban Renewal LLC Chairman, uh, you may have, uh, misstated, there are no variances, no variances.
I didn't, I'm sorry, there were no variances.
There's no, and, and we wouldn't mind if you at least gave the public an opportunity to say something, uh, if they wanted to. I doubt anybody's gonna be here. There was no notice required, but I, it might be beneficial just to open it up for a second to see if any member of the public has any comment, but I'm gonna suggest, Chairman, this is really what I'll call it, an administrative matter. There's no development involved, there's no construction, it's a minor subdivision, no variances, and as the reports mentioned, it carries out the contractual agreement that's in the redevelopment plan between my client and the township and also the May 2021 resolution, which calls for this subdivision, its executive drive, the dog park is constructed. This is simply gonna break off, uh, the land around the dog park. So, and with my client conveying that parcel, uh, to the town, we're okay with the technical comments and Mr. Hess's May 28th letter will work out those things, uh, when we prepare the subdivision deed. I have Chuck Thomas from my client, if you need him, if you need him, uh, but there's, the land use law says shall approve, uh, as you may remember from a prior application, if there's no variances, uh, so that's really what I have, Chairman. We're available for questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the Board have any questions on what Mr. Skolnick said about this application? Mayor McCartney?
Mr. Skolnick, thank you so much, and we're so pleased. The Dog Park Grand Opening was beautiful. There were so many people in attendance. The only thing we've heard so far is that we need more shade. I understand the trees are newly planted and of course they will blossom and bloom. Is that something, you're saying you're conveying that to the town, but is that something the town will be responsible for, or will you be providing more shade there?
Have Mr. Thomas on the line, maybe we'll get him sworn in, he's our client. I don't, I'm not aware, although there may be some requirements in the agreement, but, uh, we have Chuck on the Zoom here.
I am.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, if you please raise your right hand. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. The question is, the planting of the trees, is there other, are there other trees that are going to be planted or other, um, modifications to the dog park, to your knowledge?
Uh, at this time, we feel the dog park is complete.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the Board have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I think maybe I'm, I'm gonna, uh, add to this. Um, this is just, uh, what is the first step to transfer the title to the town. So the town couldn't take title, it's being gifted it, uh, consideration is a dollar, it's nominal consideration, um, but you can't hand them a piece of property unless it's subdivided. So this is the first procedural step for that second official step to be taken, at which point everything in the dog park is owned by the township and it's up to the township then, um, at that point, how they want to add to it or continue with it.
Right. So just to be clear, at, at this point administratively, the land is not conveyed, the land is just subdivided, it's still in the original ownership.
That's right, and they're, they're operating the dog park under a use and occupancy agreement, anticipating the closing, which will happen after this, um, minor subdivision is, um, concluded by, accepted by the Board.
Okay.
Thank you, Diana McGovern, for the clarification.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hess or Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Do any members of the public have any questions? Do any members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close. Questions? Do any members of the public have any comments? Do any members of the public have any comments? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there also are no hands raised.
Seeing none, we will close that portion. At this time, I make a motion that we approve PB 24-10 Green Essex Partners Urban Renewal and Entity LLC Block 155 Lot 42.03 Zone Executive Drive Redevelopment Zone 1,000 Executive Drive Minor Subdivision Without Variances. Do I have a second?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman, seconds. Guarino, seconds. Please, uh, Yamalat on the motion.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morado?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes, motion carries. Mr. Skolnick, thank you very much. Mr. Thomas, thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Chairman, I think that there was some intent to memorialize this action.
Ah, yes, I mean, like, uh, you're absolutely right.
So just so the Board understands that resolution, I, I noticed I had the wrong address. It was supposed to have been 1,000 Executive Drive. That's been corrected and sent to Yamalat. So with that correction, um, the rest of the resolution, I think is fine.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the Board, so at this time, as this was an administrative function, we can, and, and I will make a motion that we do, uh, memorialize the resolution PB 24-10 Green Essex Minor Subdivision Resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cardoza, seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morado?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Skolnick. I had to turn the page.
Uh, we appreciate that. Have a nice evening.
You too. Thank you all. Okay. PB 24-04 Montclair Golf Club Block 151 Lots 31 Zone R2, 25 Prospect Avenue. The current application requests variance relief in connection with the applicant's plan to construct a new halfway house to consist of a 1,170 square foot addition to an existing accessory building and provide various other improvements to the property, including construction of a three-foot-high stone wall along the clubhouse frontage to improve aesthetics for the applicant.
Should be Alan Tremulak.
Uh, this, this is Tim Derrick from, from Langen. We're all, can, can you let Roger Bacon in as a panelist?
Is he in the attendee audience?
He's in the attendee audience.
Under his name?
Yes.
Can he raise his, his hand, his little hand signal?
He just did.
Okay. Yeah, he's listed as a guest. I'm gonna let him in now. Mr. Bacon, would you please identify yourself? You're muted.
Start video. Okay. Okay. Um, yes, I'm, uh, Roger Bacon, I'm the general manager of the Montclair Golf Club.
Okay, and, um, I'll, I'll jump in. Can you hear me? This is Alan Tremulak.
Um, yes, okay.
Okay, we're all together, or some of us are in the same room, uh, for convenience purposes. Um, so if I might, Mr. Chairman, uh, as I mentioned, my name is Alan Tremulak. I'm an attorney with the Montclair Real Estate Law Group on Bloomfield Avenue in Montclair. I'm appearing this evening on behalf of the Montclair Golf Club. Um, this is an, an application for site plan approval involving the golf club property located at 25 Prospect Avenue, which is Block 151 Lot 1 on the West Orange Tax Maps. Uh, the entire golf club property consists of 277 acres and 189 of those acres are located in the Township of West Orange. Um, all of the improvements, which we'll be discussing this evening, uh, are located, uh, in West Orange. This Board, um, has heard several applications over the last few years, um, involving the golf club property in connection with various, uh, improvements to the club's buildings and other facilities, which have taken place over the last, I'm gonna say, four or five years in large part. Uh, this application tonight essentially represents the latest phase of improvements proposed by the club. And this evening, as you'll hear in a few minutes, there are basically three components to this site plan application. Firstly, the club proposes to demolish the original, uh, swimming pool complex, which is no longer in use, uh, and to renovate and expand, uh, the existing golf club, uh, or golf shop building. Um, the expansion, the building expansion will contain approximately 1,800 square feet. It will be located to the rear of the golf club, uh, or golf building, which means it'll be further into the golf club, uh, and not visible from Prospect Avenue whatsoever. Uh, the second phase of the site plan involves the construction of a new accessory building, a halfway house containing approximately 840 square feet. The halfway house will be located to the rear of the golf club, golf shop building, further into the golf course property and further away from Prospect Avenue or any neighboring properties. The third and final component of the, uh, application tonight involves various improvements to be made in front of the main clubhouse, uh, including reconfiguring the parking in the front yard, the creation of 15 new parking spaces in front of the clubhouse building, uh, some improvements to the driveways, providing ingress and egress to the site, and lastly, the construction of a three-foot wall in front of the main clubhouse, uh, near Prospect Avenue. Uh, those are the three major components that we'll be discussing tonight. Uh, we're also seeking in addition to site plan approval, three variances. Two of the variances are for the height, uh, or heights of the accessory buildings. Uh, the ordinance provides a height limitation of 15 feet for accessory buildings. Uh, we're proposing heights of 22 and 24 feet for the two buildings I mentioned, the new halfway house and the expanded golf building. The third variance relates to the proposed, uh, three-foot wall to be, um, uh, constructed in front of the clubhouse property. Uh, we're proposing a 100% solid wall, three feet in height, and that requires a variance. Um, there's also one site plan waiver that we'll be seeking, which our engineer will discuss in a couple of minutes. Now, I have three witnesses to present this evening. Our first witness, uh, will be Timothy Derrick from Langen Engineering, who's testified in connection with the last several applications before this Board at least. And following his testimony, we'll have our project architect, Brian Cooney from, uh, FJ Roding, the project architect, who will discuss the architectural plans for the expanded golf building and the new halfway house. And lastly, uh, our third witness will be, uh, Greg Woodruff from Langen Engineering, who will testify as our professional planner in support of the variances that we're seeking. So, Mr. Chairman, lest the Board has any preliminary questions from me, I would propose to call our first witness, Timothy Derrick.
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay. It'd be sworn.
Mr. Derrick?
Yes. I'm in the room too.
I've got a lot of people going on. Uh, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Right. Tim, you, you've testified, uh, in connection with the several recent applications involving the improvements to the golf club property, is that correct?
Yes, the most recent reservoir expansion and pump house and then.
I'm sorry, can, can we go back and leer him his, uh, education, please?
Yes, that was my next question, Mr. Chair. Uh, you know, even though you've been here before, I was gonna ask you to briefly summarize your educational background and your professional qualifications.
Yeah, I, I have a Bachelor in Science from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute in Civil Engineering, and I have a P, a New Jersey Professional, I'm professionally licensed as an engineer in the state of New Jersey for over 20 years.
Okay, and you, how long have you been associated with, uh, Langen Engineering?
Uh, two, 25 years tomorrow.
Okay. Um, and is your, uh, your license currently in good standing?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I've offered Mr. Derrick as an expert in the field of, uh, civil engineering.
Uh, do any members of the Board have any questions? Seeing none, we accept Mr. Derrick as a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, uh, Tim, would you, uh, you prepared the site plans that have been presented to the Board in connection with this application, correct?
Yes.
And for the record, the most recent plans have a revision date of May 3, 2024, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Would you provide the Board with an overview of the site plan drawings, um, and, you know, focusing on the cha, you know, primarily on the changes and the additions for which the club is seeking approval this evening?
Sure, I'm gonna share my screen with the plans.
You should have share screen capabilities, there you go.
Yes, sorry, just took me a second. So, uh, just to start off, just to get a, sort of the bearings of the project, uh, it's a similar plan that we've submitted for prior applications, but this is a, uh, part of our plans that the overall site location tax map set, uh, last revised in the May 3rd.
You have to label this, I'm sorry, Mr. Ms. McGovern, you have to label this?
Well, if it's with the application package, no, but I think each page that you're referring to, like this one, it's very hard to read, it's small on my computer.
He said this is from a previous site.
Yeah, just please refer to the page number on the site plan. So this is CS 002. As you're testifying to each page, reference the page number.
Sure, this is a, yeah, drawing CS 002, what we call the overall site location and tax map. Uh, just to get some, some bearings, Pro, Prospect Avenue is, is on the bottom of the page. All the improvements are along Prospect Avenue. The existing clubhouse is, is, is in this area. The new pool is, is further down on the set to the south, near, nearest, uh, the residence inn. So that, and the existing pool is located next to the clubhouse. Uh, so all the work is here, but I'm gonna move on to our overall site plan, which is drawing CS 101, at the same, same revision date. Uh, this is zooming, uh, more of the same area, but as you see, the clubhouse is here, the existing pool, just for perspective, is approximately where that yellow box is. Uh, and we are, I'm gonna go, I apologize, I'm gonna go to, there's a zoomed inside plan, just to make it a little clearer. So this is drawing CS 102. This is showing the improvements in the area of the, of the existing pool. The existing pool is located here, uh, and there's an exist, and there's an existing building that's located here and extends, includes the pro shop here. This part of the building will be demolished. It currently houses a locker room, snack bar, uh, that will no longer, they're no longer in use. Uh, the pool is currently, it's, it's filled in for safety reasons, but it'll be the, it will be the demolishing part of the project. So the project, this part, this in this area includes expanding the pro shop, the golf building, which houses, uh, the pro shop, uh, golf bag storage, the starter area, uh, and, and then in the future will hold, uh, two hitting bays or golf, golf simulators. Uh, additionally, the, they're proposing to build a golf cart staging area. Cur, currently there's golf carts are staged within the drive aisles. You're in front of the, in front of this existing building and to the side of the building. By eliminating this, this and building, building a golf cart staging area allows better free, free flow of, uh, traffic and drop off within the parking lot as, as is intended. And then the halfway house, which is being proposed here, will house a, a kitchen and bathrooms for use by, by golfers during, in the middle of the round and after the round. Uh, the remaining work we're proposing is within the parking lot, along Prospect Avenue. We're looking to maintain all threes, the three existing driveways while expanding this, the, the further south driveway, which is currently one, uh, one in and one out. We are looking to add a dedicated left turn and right turn lanes. Uh, and also, in the, as we do that, we will also look to eliminate some parking that's currently immediately adjacent to that entrance to allow for better kind of just flow into the, into the golf facility and also south towards the pool. Uh, the improvements will also include curbing along the, along Prospect Avenue, but the county and a three-foot-high decorative wall to, for aesthetic purposes. Uh, as we eliminate some parking here, we're proposing 15 new parking spaces here. There'll be, uh, a net four additional parking spaces. We currently have 385 parking spaces on site and we're proposing 389. There will be no changes to the ADA parking on site. Existing spaces are to remain. Uh, there's one existing EV parking space, we're proposing to add a second. That's, and, and then generally, that's the extent of our, of our site improvements.
Tim, before you move on, um, and you might wanna go back to the prior plan, but I, I don't know if you have this dimension on the plan, but if you could at least give the Board an approximation as to how, uh, far the existing golf building is from Prospect Avenue?
It's probably just the best is on our overall site plan. The existing buildings are probably, is approximately, I apologize, maybe two hundred and ten feet from, two hundred and ten feet from Prospect Avenue. The new building with, with an overhang here will be two hundred feet from Prospect Avenue. And the halfway house will be three hundred and twenty-three feet from Prospect Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
The remaining improvements we have have to do with the required utilities and required grading and drainage and lighting improvements. I'm just trying to get to my grading plan. So, this is our overall grading and drainage plan, drawing C G one oh one. There are, grades are generally to remain as existing. We are planning, this project does deserve greater than an acre, but it, so is a major development by the stormwater management rules and by your code. In order to address that, we are, we are providing underground detention within, that's ultimately within the golf course area and a porous pavement that's at the front, in, within the new parking spaces at the front. The porous pavement discharges to, to the county system, which ultimately discharges into Eagle Rock Reservation. The other area, this, the area to the golf course discharges to a, an internal drainage system that ultimately discharges to Peckman, Peckman River, greater than two thousand feet away. Moving to utilities. The existing sanitary, we provide by, you're using, reuse of an existing sanitary, sanitary lateral that was previously serviced, the serviced the pool facility. Gas will be provided by the existing gas service that was went to, that was also to the pool facility. Electric and power and communications are provided through the existing golf course building service. We are, and then also for the site improvements, we have, we're proposing. We are proposing new, new lighting within, within the project area where it currently, currently is lit by floodlights and, and some existing building lighting. We are, the points here depict new pole lighting, and there will also be, and I apologize, this is drawing L L one oh one overall lighting plan. So, there'll be new, new decorative pole manic fixtures matching what was previously installed for the pool facility a few years ago. There will also be some, some decorative lighting on top of the walls at the entrances along Prospect Avenue. And then additionally, last bit of improvements we're proposing have to do with landscaping, and that's shown on our landscape plans. This is the overall landscape plan, L P one oh one. As you can see, there's, there's, we're proposing landscaping along the retaining, I apologize, not retaining, along the decorative wall on Prospect Avenue. There's several, there's some, several trees and other, other low low landscaping around the proposed buildings. As part of the project, we will be removing one tree as requested in the, I believe, the engineer's letter. It's, it's an ash tree that's in poor health that's this island. Other than that, there are no other tree removals that are proposed as part of this project.
Tim, you presented this plan to the at the scrap meeting for this project?
Yes.
Okay. All right, you recall there was a concern that was raised during that meeting about concerns with respect to possible stacking of vehicles exiting the property?
Yes.
Can you just orient the board to that and, and discuss that issue when you get there?
Excuse me. Looking back at our overall site plan, C S one oh, one oh one, there's a question about stack, that stacking and cars interfering with traffic flow between in the, in the area of the entrance and exit. I just want to point out that this is an existing parking lot that has been functioning this way for greater than fifty years, closer to probably to a hundred years with the, with the driveways in place. What we're doing is improving what's, what's currently exists. These are generally private members using this facility or used to the traffic as is. As I said, there was parking, we, there's existing parking in this area, and there's existing parking in this area, and there's currently only one way in and out. So, as it is, cars do just line up here and block traffic by eliminating the parking here and here. We, there's plenty, there's room for cars to wait here and wait, wait at this intersection. And also, there's room for right turns to make, be made while left turns are waiting. Additionally, there's, there's minimal traffic is going this way. Obviously, there'll be something increased because we have more, we have parking here now, but it's still limited. Everyone generally wants to park in the area of the golf, of the pro shop and where they enter the locker rooms. Why they want to park by the pool, which is at the southern end, so the southern end of the property. We believe what we're showing is just an improvement on what currently exists and functions today.
There's one, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's one site plan waiver that we're seeking as part of this plan. Is that right?
Yes, the waiver from adding internal sidewalks within the new parking areas. As, as it operates today, everyone, all the users and members walk through the parking lot to get to where they're going. We're not looking to change that today.
Okay. And Moncar Golf Club, to my knowledge, has always been a private golf club. Is that right?
Correct.
And is there any intention to change that going forward?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, club that will continue to operate as a private club and not be open to the general public, but simply to members and their guests. Is that right?
Correct, I believe.
No change in?
No, no change in current use.
Okay. I just mentioned that because there was a comment in one of the review letters we received. All right, I think my final question was, have you had an opportunity to review the updated comment letter from John Hess, the board's engineer, dated June four, two thousand twenty-four?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and are you, is there anything in that report you'd like to discuss, or are you able to commit to complying with all of his comments?
I believe we can comply with all his comments or come to an understanding, understanding or agreement if there's, if there is a discrepancy.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Do any members of the board have any questions? Vice Chairman Garino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question from Derek. Are you qualified to give testimony or answer a question concerning traffic? And traffic evaluation?
Very limited.
Okay, well, then just from your drawings, I have a concern about the privacy walls. Has anything been taken, any analysis done with any increased inability for people exiting the property to see traffic coming across Prospect?
We, as part of our plans that we have, we, on drawing, which is submitted, C S one zero four site triangles plan, it demonstrates the visibility for, for traffic for exiting, for exiting from these, from the driveways. And just the point of the, the walls are well behind the stopbars, so they're, they're not interfering with any views.
Okay, and, and the lighting that you propose, the lighting you propose, has that been analyzed to figure, will it make any glaring on the drivers coming out of the property that would impede their seeing ongoing traffic on Prospect?
I'm sorry, the proposed light, proposed.
Right, the lighting that you say you're going to put on top of the.
The lights are all have, they're LED, so I won't say half-size shields, but they're all directional and won't, and won't be, the light won't be directed towards the road. And, and our light level plan demonstrates the light levels within the area of the project.
Okay, was it, and I need to ask, was a traffic engineer utilized to look at this and give their expert opinion as to the traffic and the flow?
No, not specifically, no, not changing. We're maintaining what's, what's there with, with some, some improvements.
Okay, and, and my last question, sir, is, is there any intention to put any sidewalks in front of the property here that any property, any sidewalks that do not exist now, would there be any intention of adding or repairing or putting in additional sidewalks?
Currently, there's no, it's not part of this project, and I believe that'd be something the county would have to propose.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's, there's nothing for, in the area of the project to connect to. So, no, we are not proposing any of sidewalks.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chairman, I do. And I'm not sure if this testimony, but will there be any testimony that if there are any hazardous trees anywhere in the outlying area adjacent to the property, will that be addressed? I've heard from residents concerned about hazardous trees.
I, I don't know if I could, if I can speak to hazardous trees. I know, I can't, as the engineer, I can't really speak to it, but from past hearings, I understand if there's any hazardous trees that was on the golf law property, the golf law will typically be willing to address the matter.
You know what? Can I stop you? Who's talking? Is it, is it Mr. Tremelak or is it a witness that hasn't been sworn in yet?
No, it's Mr. Derrick.
Okay, because I, I'm having a hard time. I see a group of people and then I don't see it because of this screen sharing. I can't see.
I apologize.
Okay. Oh, because it's, all right, because you're on mute on my screen, but yet you're in that room with them. Is that what's going on?
Correct.
Okay, got it, sorry.
I apologize for the confusion.
But thank you for answering the question about the hazardous trees, so may have to bring that to your attention.
Any other questions, Mayor?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
I was part of the scrab, so I, I think they addressed my comment in the entrance because they're reconfiguring it slightly, but I think they've got enough stop lines and stop signs to control the traffic at that T intersection, that sort of a, actually it's more like a four-way intersection. So, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, my, my concerns have been addressed already.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mrs. Meraldo.
Yeah, Chairman, I just, question about the stormwater management. The plans, that's all been filed with the D P, or do you have to file with the D P or anything with that, that nature?
No, there, there's no D P permitting required for this project.
Okay. Other than that, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardoza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was testimony that the, there would be no changes to ADA parking, but that was, there was proposal to add one additional EV charging station. So, both, that would mean both ADA and EV parking would be in compliance with town ordinance is and requirements?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Capr. Do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I do have a couple of questions. You know, one, one was the one that Vice Chairman Garino already asked, which was about sidewalks along Prospect Avenue. Was also curious about that, but I, yeah, I heard your, your answer to that question. Could you speak to, I, I was thinking a bit about both the ADA accessibility. Could you, could you speak to like the accessible path into the building? And then additionally, the, for the drivers and passengers who'd be getting out of the cars in this, this fifteen spaces near Prospect Avenue, how they would get into, you know, the building or, you know, yeah, just their, their path into the space?
The existing ADA parking in this area is located along the turnaround mislocation. And the entrance to the clubhouse is, is right here underneath the portico share. And there's a, there's an ADA ramp that was installed roughly ten, fifteen years ago as part of another site plan application that they, that, that people can use. Additionally, there's another ADA path out to the, to some of the patio areas that can also be accessed from these ADA parking spaces. Additionally, the two ADA parking spaces here, users would, would, would walk, would walk up the driveway to use the same ADA ramp. And people parking here would either, would, would likely, would walk out and using the drive aisles, walk up to the clubhouse or to the, or to the golf areas, similar to how the rest of the park, the rest of the parking facilities.
And have there been any issues with, you know, those who've been using the handicap accessible spaces? I guess the concern I have is a little bit with people walking kind of in the, the drive aisles, especially like the, the access drive. Have there been any issues, to your knowledge, of any complaints or any issues with that?
Nothing that's been brought to my attention.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And then I, I do have one question about stormwater management as well. Did you complete a geotechnical report as a part of, I, I, I think you said you're proposing, it says this on the plan, the course asphalt out front?
We've performed, we've begun a investigation, and we'll provide the results to the town shortly. And if there's any changes required, we'll make them. But the initial results we have seems, are, fall in line with our assumptions we've made.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's, these are the only questions I had.
Thank you. I have a question. So, would it change the plan drastically if you put a sidewalk along Prospect Avenue? Would that change the, the places where you have the new parking spots?
No. No, not, not, not that, I believe so. They exist, just the, the property line is here. There is a, the, the county does have a reservation line, which is a stash line, but they previously allowed, they've allowed us to do work within that reservation line. But if they didn't need to put a sidewalk in, there is room to put a sidewalk in.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Mr. Derrick, you mentioned the, the, the circulation on the site and went through the different stop areas, and so that would help to prevent excessive stacking. And so, were you able to take a look at my report and the consideration that I mentioned that, you know, asked if you would consider in terms of the circulation on the site?
We, I did see your report, the hesitation we have for making this drive aisle one way is that we're trying not to introduce additional traffic underneath the portico share where people are being dropped off typically. And so, if someone's parking here, we want to give them the option to, to get out without having to go underneath the portico share. That's, that was the consideration we made. And then additionally, I think you had some comments about this third, this middle driveway here. Typically, the majority of the traffic comes through this driveway, the driveway, the south, southernmost driveway. This driveway is typically used for people dining, people who are dining, leaving ballet parking, but also more critically for the club, the, the service area and food deliveries are, are made to this at this point here. So, so this is, so all the food service trucks come in and use this, use this driveway as is. So, that's what we're looking to maintain, the, the current driveway, although it's not something standard you typically see. This is how the club functions today, and will need to continue to function in the future.
Yeah, and, and I, and I do appreciate that, you know, this has been in existence for quite some time. And, you know, it's been, you know, if it's not broken. And um, you know, it's been, you know, if it's not broken, don't fix it, but. You know, in my opinion, you're making a substantial change by introducing these fifteen spaces here. And, you know, in in in, I was a bit concerned that especially with the uh. Ingress at that center spot, that center ingress point, that you may have. Created a, an opportunity for conflict with cars coming off the new fifteen space. Area as well as cars coming from circular driveway, that that was my concern, not so much. Any cars exiting from that central, but the cars coming in, so that, that, that was my concern. Uh. Sorry?
No, nothing, sorry.
All right, the other question I had was the, I'm I'm familiar with some of the species of landscaping proposed on the uh. Uh, frontage along the wall, the line of the wall that's proposed in the front. Um, generally would, is is the intent that the uh foliage that's put there, the landscaping that's put there will. Cover the wall? Get to a height above the wall, what, what are you looking at in terms of when these vegetation is fully?
The intention is for it just to be a low, to be low landscaping, not to cover the wall.
Okay, so it would not even get as high as the three foot height?
No. No.
Okay.
We'll maintain it so, so it wouldn't.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hess, do you have any questions, Mr. Derek?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for the testimony? That was just provided, please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public? Have any questions for Mr. Derek about the testimony that was just provided, please raise your hand and be identified.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, someone's hand was up and then it went back down. So we'll give it another shot. Any member of the public who has any questions, please raise your hand. Yes, Mr. Diarco, uh, welcome to the meeting, can you uh hear us? And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, uh, Joseph Diarco, Township Manager of Verona. I have a question on the stormwater runoff drainage, Mr. Derek said. Here is, doesn't require a D P, D E P review or approval? Obviously, Verona is always concerned of runoff from the golf course. Did you hear that?
Mr. Derek, did you hear that?
I could hear that, was there, I apologize, was there a question?
Mr. Diarco, would you put that in the form of a question?
Yes. You in. You indicated the D P doesn't have to review the stormwater runoff management plan for the golf course in this project. Is that correct?
Correct.
And of those, part of the plans? That can be reviewed? By Verona.
We, we've committed all our plans and calculations to the town for review, and Mr. Hess's. Give them as a major development, we're subject to the same rules. Uh, to the New Jersey, the New Jersey State Stormwater Management Rules that. That that were in place at the time of submission and are similar to, same as the the rules that are in the town code, so. In that sense, we're subject to the same. The same things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diarco. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Derek about his testimony, please raise your hand and be identified?
Mr. Chairman, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Mr. Chairman's.
Vice Chairman Garino, yes, sir.
I I'd like to, if I could add one more. Request. Just from a point of, you know, we in West Orange are trying to create the walkable community. And. We always like to, and we ask all our new developed, any renovations, any, you know, improvements, stuff like that. To consider. Putting in sidewalks where sidewalks do not exist. To allow our pedestrians, it's goodwill. And that's all we're asking because that's our whole goal in our complete streets in Vision Zero. And a street like Present Valley Way, a road like um Prospect is heavily traveled, so I'm asking. Uh, would the club consider? Thinking about adding sidewalks? To the front of the property?
I I I, I don't know, I can't speak for the club as engineer.
No, I understand, I, but I would, I would wonder if the club itself and its administration would consider, it's a goodwill thing.
Yeah, I I would just like to point out, though, that there are no. Sidewalks on either side, on the West Orange side of the golf club property. In front of the residence, residence and in the manor, there's no sidewalks to connect to.
I know, but it's always a start, but.
I understood, just, I understand, just.
Okay. Well, I, look, I I I like to ask, so I asked, and so I hope, I hope the golf club administration considers it, we'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Derek. Mr. Galak, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my next witness is Brian, um, Cooney?
Cooney, yep, that's right.
Brian, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, do you hear me?
I'm on mute, yeah. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Brian, would you um, provide the board with your professional qualifications and your educational background, please?
Sure, I have a master's in architecture from uh, Cthulhu University in Washington, D.C. Uh, I've been a licensed architect since twenty sixteen in uh, New Jersey and New York.
What is your current uh, business affiliation?
Uh, I am a. Project architect at at Jering Architects and. Work here on this project.
Okay, are you familiar with this project, your office prepared the architectural plans for? The two buildings?
I am, yes, I I I contribute to it.
Yeah, okay. Um, have you appeared before other uh, planning boards and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
All right, approximately how many times?
Uh, one time.
Okay, well. And we're qualifications accepted as a, as an ar- in the field of architecture?
I just have one question, your license is in good standing in the state of New Jersey presently, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, unless anybody, do any members of the board have any com- questions about uh, Mr. Rudding's? Uh, credentials, seeing none, we accept you as an architect licensed state of New Jersey, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Brian, would you review the architectural plans? That have been presented in this application for the halfway house and the expansion of the golf building?
Yeah, so uh, let me pull up our filed architectural drawings. I don't know if you can see my screen. I have uh, uh, drawn H one up. And uh. I'll be testifying to the uh, two structures that are discussed in these, this application. Um, this current structure is the halfway house. Which is located between the ninth. Hole on this side, tenth hole on this side. And it is, uh, as Mr. Tremelak uh. Said earlier in the testimony that it is an eight hundred and forty square foot building, um, that includes all the enclosed walls. On the interior of this building here, so any, any enclosed wall. Within this portion of the building is within that eight hundred and forty square feet. There is uh, seventeen hundred and eighty. Square feet of covered porch for roof cover for people dining and using halfway house. Uh, so the total under roof uh, of this structure is. Uh, twenty six hundred square feet of a single-story structure, there's no. Access above, it's a single-story structure. Uh, the halfway house includes uh, accessible ADA bathrooms. A janitor's closet, which you can see in the middle. A prep kitchen for the. The serving area here. There's a serving area and bar open to the. Uh, the covered porch area, and that includes, uh, it services the, all the members, includes. Uh, pizza oven grill, uh, snacks, refreshments uh, for your. Halfway house and after golf needs here. And this is a completely open kitchen, but when uh, service is over, there's shutter doors that roll down and. Secure this whole entire uh, part of the building. Uh. The building, uh, as we've drawn it, uh. I'm gonna skip to the next page, is page H two. Uh, you can see elevations of the halfway house. Uh, we tried to stay consistent with the other accessory buildings on the club campus. And we tried to stay with the same architectural uh, materials and language of the campus as well. So the. Main materials of the building are composite clapboard siding and shingle siding. Uh, we would use in a architectural roof shingle. Which would be a slate-like shingle that would also match uh, similar. Roof types on the campus. Uh, around the building, you can see there's this covered. Porch uh, for people to shelter under. Uh, you can't access it above, it's decorative only, and the railing. Up top is put there because, again, it uh, it, we want to blend it in with other buildings on the Montclair campus.
Um. What? I'm sorry, uh, you can. Continue.
No, no, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna, my question was, wh- what is the height of that proposed building?
So the height of the proposed building is uh, twenty-three uh, foot four inches, uh, and. It, we, we felt that it was, uh, in same scales all the buildings uh, on campus that are adjacent to it, and. Uh, in some cases, it's, it's shorter than a few of the buildings right there. Um, the, the roof above houses uh, the mechanical systems of the. Uh, down below use, so we feel like it's, it's a necessity to have the roof. Uh, at this height.
Okay, so the twenty-two foot height. Um, was due to the need to have mechanical systems in the upper.
Sorry, yes, yeah, let me, yeah, let me correct myself, twenty, twenty-two foot height to that, to the range, yeah.
And again, you need, are you, you testified that you needed the additional height in order to have? Room for the mechanical systems on the upper floor?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and is the height of that building relatively consistent with the height of the other accessory buildings on the golf property?
Yes, the, the adjacent buildings in the clubhouse, uh, it is consistent with the heights and uh, a bit shorter than a few areas.
Okay, you want to continue um, with the plans, I guess you've got the building expansion next, or?
Right, the, the, so the building expansion is next, uh, that is the pro shop. So we are on page P one, the filed architectural plans. Um, I've drawn a line on this plan just to be. Clear what's new and existing, uh, as Mr. Derek. Mentioned earlier that the, on the left side of the building, we are demolishing part of the building, so the pool accessory. Uh, rooms and structures over here that were no longer in use will be demolished on the plan left side. And then the new addition portion is, if you can see this thin red line here. On the north side of that line, the top of that line, this is all new addition. So the pro shop, um, to get square footages for you, uh, it, it's, uh. The existing square footage is forty-eight hundred square feet, um, these are ballpark numbers, I can provide exact numbers if you'd like. Um, we are removing from the left side sixteen hundred square feet of. Space with the pool accessory rooms getting removed. Um. So the remaining part of the building is thirty-two hundred, and our intent in. Back portion is to add uh, seventeen hundred, uh, thirty square feet. Uh, of the building to expand the pro shop and the simulator area. So the net add of the space is about a hundred and thirty-eight square feet of the building, so we're not making the building. Incredibly larger, just kind of reallocating space. Uh, this, uh, the building houses the uh, existing pro shop, which we would expand. Uh, the starter, so you can get your, your starting time. Uh, the bag storage area here, um, some accessory buildings to the bag storage. And a new golf simulator, uh, two simulators and lounge. And offices in the back and uh, back house areas to support the, the pro shop. Uh, we, we're uh, introducing a new portico here, uh, for the uh, entry arrival. So, and a covered portion here for. The staff to, to stage for all the golfers, so. Excuse me?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I was talking to someone else.
Okay. Um.
Brian, just a quick question, just orient, to orient the board, the bottom of that plan. Is the front of the building, which. Correct me if I'm wrong, faces Prospect Avenue, is that right?
Correct, so if, just directly, if you look. Directly down from this, it's Prospect Ave, straight down, so uh, down, down below here is the parking lot. And the halfway house is up here. And I'll be showing after this, I'm showing three D images that can orient everybody as to where our buildings are located.
So the, the addition is to the rear of the building, you know, which would be facing the golf uh, course, correct?
Correct, so the, the rear of the building here is the new addition, it's facing the ninth hole here and the halfway house. So uh, the, the only new. Uh, portion of work would be, that, that would be visible from the Prospect Ave side would be the. Starter portico entry and this side covered porch area.
Right.
Okay. Um, let me move on to the architectural elevations to. Explain the additions and and modifications to this building. Um, starting in the uh, top left, number one, this is page P three, the architectural drawings. Uh, this is the golf bag storage area, this is the portion of the building where we would be removing. A portion of the building, this is the side where we would remove uh, structure from the pool side. Uh, from the left side of the building, and we are adding this. Uh, decorative rail to tie in with the halfway house, another portions of the building, net coverage for. The uh, the golf staff and people uh, staging the, the golfers underneath. So it keeps people dry before they get out in the round. Um, it also would have uh, scoring underneath and access in here to the golf bag storage room, so. You're, you enter in through the starter. Booth in the front of the building facing Prospect Ave, and you would continue underneath this covered. Uh, this covered roof to continue on to your, to your golf round. Um, this is. Moving on to number two, this is the new. Portico and starter booth where you would arrive and speak to someone in the booth and, and uh. Uh, figure out when your tee time is. And this is a new. Portico roof and addition to the front of the building for arrival purposes. Uh, moving to number three. This is the rear facing, so this is facing the golf course and the. Halfway house, so in the back of the building, uh, we are, this is the new addition portion. What you would see from, from that vantage point, uh, there's windows for offices, the pro, the pros office is here. The simulator is located in this blank wall area, and then this is the simulator lounge. Again, all uh, similar. Uh, finishes as the halfway house and the campus would be. Uh, composite clapboard siding, architectural uh, shingle roof. And generally matching uh, the, the aesthetic of the campus. The final elevation on the page, uh, page number four, this is uh, about a bit of a mix of both new and existing. This is in the existing pro shop, um. You move back to the. Plan, you can see this octagon. Structure, we're looking now at. This view here, so you can see the two entries into the pro shop. You can see here is the new entry, and this is the new addition portion. You could see we are keeping with the existing roof, uh, roof lines and working with the existing building to not. Uh, increase the, the roof height. Uh, anywhere on this building.
What is the height of the building addition, and how does the height of the addition compare to the height of the existing? Golf building?
So the existing building, we're, there's a few different roof pitches on this roof, um, the. Uh, existing roof median kind of uh, peak here, if you can see my cursor, is twenty foot two. This peak is twenty-four foot eight for this octagon structure, and uh. I don't have this one listed, but it's about a foot shorter, foot and a half shorter here. And then on the other side, a- as I mentioned, there's multiple roof peaks on this uh, building, on the new addition side. Um, the highest peak of the ridge is nineteen foot eight. And finally, moving on to our. Filed renderings, uh, just, this'll give a clear picture of every, um, everything I just spoke about. See, I am on page R one, and on page. See, I am on page R one and on page R one, we are reviewing the. Both buildings from the parking lot, this is the golf cart staging area and where the existing building was. This is the new portico for the starter right here, and this is the covered. Entry for golf staging and the entrance to the golf bag room, and then the distance you can see the. Halfway house and and the covered porch beyond. The you can see the peaks here, we're utilizing these existing ridges and continuing them around. This is just an enlarged view of that front portico, you can see we included a decorative. Some decorative elements and point of arrival, when you get to the golf course, starter booth beyond the pro shop. You can access through a pathway through here and around. And you can access the the halfway house through this covered porch. And moving further into that golf cart storage areas, so you can see this is the covered staging area with the scoring. Within it and enlarge view of the the halfway house. This page R three and page R four, a couple of different views of the halfway house, I'm going to zoom into the. Top left, this is coming off of the ninth hole arrival on to the halfway house. And you'd be able to park your golf cart and come in, get your refreshments and then move on to ten. As you can see, it's it's a lot of under coverage for shaded shaded dining. And then on the bottom of the page that was filed, this is the rear of the halfway house. Which is a bit downhill and you can see that it's again, it's it's full wraparound porch. Now page R five, this is a view from the. Rear grass area, it's a bit of an aerial view, you can see this is the parking lot in the distance with cars. And you can see the dining area in the open, this is the open kitchen below. And the this is the small portion of the golf clubhouse. Then finally, a full aerial from the parking lot side, you can see. Kind of multiple portions of the golf campus, you can see the ninth hole, you can see this is the. Altered building with the golf men he's in it and the new portico, the existing pro shop is in this portion. Golf staging is in this area and golf cart staging is in this area and the halfway house. Is located back here with interconnected walkways.
Thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Brian? I don't have any additional questions.
I think so, I think I have, I've basically everything covered for the testimony I've written, so.
Yeah, I think it covered everything, no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Roaring, on the roofs, are these going to be? Roofs that will decrease the heat island effect?
I I don't believe they will, so the are you indicating the flat roofs or the?
And any of the material, like we usually want a white roof or a roof that decreases the heat island effect?
So for the flat roofs, we were indicating, you could see it's white where we were completely trying to reduce the heat island effect, the. The roofs for all the other structures, we were matching the existing aesthetic everywhere on the campus, so I can't imagine it would. Greatly increase the heat dial effect with the new roof technology, can't really speak to that, but where we can reduce it, we are trying to.
Okay, and all the glass and windows are low E glass and windows?
That's that's our intention, yeah.
Okay, okay, members of the board, do you have any questions, Mr. Vice Chairman Guarino?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino, Mayor McCartney.
Thank you, Chairman, two comments, two questions. One, Mr. Roading, I think that this is a very stately and consistent architectural design for the halfway house. And I'm just curious if you have a word that is synonymous to halfway house that we could use? This has come up before. Is in your experience, is there a different word that we can use for a halfway house?
Yeah, there's people, excuse me, refreshment center or, yeah.
That's good, thank you for that. They, I have no problem with the proposed height for the pro shop and the simulator areas. But I didn't see where you said that you were taking sixteen hundred square feet away from the. Pool accessory uses that being relocated somewhere else, I didn't, and I'm sorry.
So Mr. Derek, he testified to the the portion of the building that was going to be demolished, so currently. Somehow I, if I could share my screen, so the existing pool is right. Currently right here and the pool, the pool portion of the building was right. Here that we're demolishing, so when I said we're reallocating space, we're demolishing sixteen hundred and we're adding seventeen. Thirty, so we're just, we're moving a portion of square footage and we're moving it to the back of the building.
Right at that space, okay, yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Klein, do you have any questions?
No, no questions, thank you.
Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Meraldo, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my typical ones, regarding. The mechanicals, you mentioned in the halfway house or the refreshment center, whatever we're going to call it tonight. The the mechanicals, what it's going to be up in those roof areas?
So the HVAC units will be up there and the the air ventilation will be up there.
Okay, and I'm looking, I was looking at the plans previously, so there's going to be grease leg vapors there. You know, between the pizza oven, the grill and everything else, they're going to be suppression system hoods and all that stuff?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, and since that is a standalone structure. It's kind of far away from the building, we've been, one of the things this board has been doing lately is trying for public safety is to say that we know we need defibrillators. Things of that nature, this is not going to be further out of the course like in some other places, but since it is far enough away. You know, I think that's something we we would suggest or request that we made a condition for that particular unit because it's further away. What about communication, is it going to be any telephones, things of that nature? Because the other thing we do, because the other thing we do is we also, we put, we, when they're distant like that, we've been now asking for. You know, there's a there's nine one one prompt wireless systems, but I don't know if this is going to warrant here because it's. Kind of close to the clubhouse, that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, yeah, and they will have a phone system in there, so the the kitchen, within the kitchen, staff members will have their own connected phone to the main clubhouse and they'll be able to. Call out from there.
Okay. So, okay, so that's 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 my question for that building, the other building, I'm still going to say, ask the same thing, now this is an existing building. You're adding to the, is this subject to retrofit under the fire code?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so it'll be brought up to whatever requirements are needed, whether it be alarms, suppression, anything of that nature, correct?
Correct, yep, so fire strobes and all will all be brought up to code.
And trusses in both buildings, I'm suing?
I believe this one is stick built, the existing. The new building, I'm not sure, I don't think we've decided the structural building yet.
Okay, I'll just, just for the record, if it is trusted, that we make sure that gets included with, you know, whatever requirements are needed with placards and all that stuff. No suppression systems, so as far as water, right, like no sprinklers, nothing like that, correct?
No, I believe so.
Okay, all right, um, and is there going to be any areas they're going to need to put fire lane striping anywhere?
Fire lane striping, I would defer Mr. Derek on that one, I don't, I don't believe so, but I'll defer to Mr. Derek on that one.
Okay, well, I think if it's if it's an area that needs to have, I know we're looking for decor, but we also have to look at safety, so. You know, whatever we have to put in there for that. I think I've asked my questions, I think that's, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question on your questions, are you suggesting that it's a condition that they have an AED and a nine one one wireless system?
No, I'm not, I'm not going to suggest a wireless system, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to make it a requirement for at least the halfway house to have an AED in there. Because that's far away and. I'll leave it up to the board if they want to throw one in the golf house, if they're buying one, they can buy two. So, but and then a condition, I think this, if there's if there's required fire lane striping, then that then that's got to be put in. And we'll we'll ask their expert about that. Other than that, I have no more questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalda, Mr. Cardoza.
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cardoza, Ms. Capfer.
I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
Mr. Hazel.
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel, Mr. Hess.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hess, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Roading on his presentation, please raise your hand and be identified? Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Roading on his presentation, please raise your hand and be identified?
Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised and please be advised that Council President Bill Rutherford has entered the meeting.
Let the record show, Council President Rutherford is during the meeting. Yeah, I'm left, welcome, Council President. Am I here, Mr. Tremulak, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my next then, final witness is Greg Woodruff.
Mr. Woodruff, would you please raise your right hand? You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Woodruff, would you provide your educational background and professional qualifications for the board?
Certainly, good evening, everyone, my name just again Greg Woodruff with Langen Engineering and Environmental Services. I'm an associate principal at the firm, I've been there a little less than twenty years, been a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey since two thousand eight. My license is in good standing, I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have testified before, I don't know the exact number, it's probably in excess of fifty or sixty boards throughout the state. For different matters, been accepted as an expert in professional planning, I believe I may have actually appeared before this board for another application at the club. In the past, actually, some years ago, so with that, I don't know if there's any other questions.
The chair offering Mr. Woodruff as an expert in the field of professional planning.
Unless any members of the board have any questions, we accept Mr. Woodruff as a licensed professional planner of the state of New Jersey, you have the floor, sir.
I I don't know that you need to talk too much about the 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 project site or the proposed improvements that have already been discussed with the board. I think it would be helpful if you could discuss the zoning for the golf club property and then. Discuss the identify and discuss the variances that are being requested as part of this application and provide your opinion regarding. Whether those variances are appropriate under the relevant standards.
Sure, will do, as you mentioned, with the board's indulgence, there's been quite a bit of testimony about the existing conditions, the proposed project. I I'd like to highlight just a couple of things, as mentioned at the very outset, we are in the R two district. The principal and accessory uses are permitted, and I think from a planning perspective, the only other. Condition that I would just highlight again, it was talked about, but the distance setback distance from Prospect Ave. To both the the golf building as well as the refreshment center. Because I think that plays into some of the planning justification that goes into the variances that relate to those two buildings. So with that, Mr. Tremiak, as you asked, I'll I'll get right to the the three variances that we're requesting. Again, just to refresh memories and summarize them, it relates to two height issues, one for the golf house expansion. The other for the refreshment center where in which both are exceeding the permitted fifteen feet in height. The architect summarized and and showed in in great detail the design of those two building structures. In my perspective, I'll I'll discuss them sort of jointly because I think the planning justification for each is similar. I believe they both would fall under what is typically referred to as the C two criteria under the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. Whereby the the benefits of the deviation outweigh any detriments or perceived detriments. Again, the architect discussed how the buildings are certainly in keeping with the rest of the campus, the heights of. You know, the building, the existing golf building that's being tied into as well as. For the refreshment center buildings that are nearby and and adjacent to that refreshment center building. So from a planning perspective, I would offer that the the benefit of those buildings being in in scale relative to. Mass and height outweighs the the any perceived detriment of technically exceeding. That allowed fifteen foot height, I would also offer, as I highlighted at the beginning, the distance, the setback distance from Prospect Ave. Plays into that planning analysis, the buildings are set quite a distance back from Prospect. Which is the only road whereby anybody would be able to see the buildings, because the rest of the property is is really internal to the golf course. And in the case of the golf building expansion, it is completely screened by the existing golf building, so. From that perspective, you know, again, the the benefit of those buildings being in keeping in height and in scale. With the overall campus would would outweigh any detriment or or perceived detriment. And the the third variance that the application includes relates, as was discussed, to the to the wall area. At the front of the property, it's proposed as a three-foot solid decorative wall. Whereby it it's only permitted, not permitted to be more than fifty percent solid. Again, in this case, I would, from a planning perspective, argue that the the variance falls under a C two criteria whereby the benefit. Of that wall being incorporated into the property as part of this proposed project outweighs the detriment of the wall being. Solid in nature, the was mentioned, the wall is going to be highly decorative, it will create a bit of a buffer. Where that condition doesn't exist currently and the parking is essentially very visible from Prospect Ave. It's going to be landscaped and will be, you know, highly architectural in nature, so will be visually appealing right at the front edge of the property. You know, I would also offer, I I am not a traffic engineer, but just thinking about it from a layman's perspective, there will be some shielding of headlights. Of cars that might be parked in the 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 golf course parking lot that would happen as a result of that wall, which is which is obviously an additional benefit. So in my perspective, from a from a planning analysis, that buffering and and that architectural improvement. Would outweigh the detriment of that wall being more solid than the the code permits. I'd offer that there are a couple. Purposes of the municipal land use law that are furthered, I would offer two specifically. Number G to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including recreational, in this case, according to. I'm sorry. Sorry, maybe that was just a random noise, sorry, I thought somebody was asking a question. In this case, I would offer that the the proposed improvements clearly enhance. The existing recreational use, which would further that purpose G, and the second that I would highlight is purpose I to promote a desirable, excuse me. Visual environment and create through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Again, we've talked about the overall design of the proposed buildings. As well as the wall and how they are part of, you know, an overall aesthetically pleasing design for the improvements at the course. And I think, you know, would would definitely fall into furthering that purpose, relative to the negative criteria, in my opinion. There's no substantial detriment to the public good, you know, again, the the. Building improvements are set considerably back from the road, in the case of the expansion, it is completely screened from visibility. From the road and in the case of the wall. The there will be certainly, as as was questioned, you know, issues relative to site triangles, things like that. There 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 should not be impacts to the public good related to issues along those lines and the accessory buildings do not create issues. Related to light, air, open space, other things that would be public concerns. And in addition, there's no substantial impairment to the intent or purpose of the zone plan. Again, the accessory buildings, the principal use are all permitted, the accessory buildings will further. The accessory buildings will further improve the efficiency and use of the existing campus. Um and there is a specific uh goal, goal nine in the two thousand nineteen master plan update uh which states to promote a desirable visual environment, just generally. And I think clearly uh the pr- the proposal here, the proposed improvements here uh would would generally fall in line with that master plan goal uh for the township in general. So I would say um Mr. Tremiak, Mr. Chairman, uh from my perspective, in completing the planning analysis, um the proof standards would be met and the board would be justified in in granting the variances requested. And with that, I'm happy to try and answer questions.
Yeah, no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um I just want to turn your attention, maybe you can speak to this where it's, I think it's quite important, and nobody said anything on page four of the Nishuane Group uh report, there is an entire half a page on landscaping. So just for uh informational purposes, the public should know that there's a lot of landscaping going on, and the board should know there's a lot of landscaping going on here. So it is not just uh changing buildings. Which is, I believe, important. When we look at these plans, how are we going to landscape, increase trees, shrubs, bushes that are native to the area? So I I think, do you agree with me, sir?
I would definitely agree. I believe Mr. Derek referenced specifically some of the plantings, and there was a question about some of the plantings relative to the wall. But in general, yeah, at at one point, I believe Mr. Derek even brought up the uh landscaping plan, and there's quite a bit uh as you reference here in this list, quite a bit of landscaping that will, of course, go in around these proposed buildings. So yes, I would agree.
I just want to make sure that we got that uh out there, so we all and the public. So uh to that, uh Mr. Vice Chairman Garino, do you have any questions?
Um. Just give me a second, Mr. Chairman, looking at my notes. Can you come back to me, Mr. Chairman?
I'll come back. You, Mayor McCartney.
I really don't have any questions, Chairman, but thank you for bringing up the landscaping plan. It is quite extensive. I was just looking. My question initially was about any hazardous trees that need to be looked at in the adjacent, around the adjacent properties.
And and we'll make that a condition of the application that the forester reviews with the uh management, any uh noxious or problematic trees in the area.
Okay, I have a question on the in the area or anywhere on the golf course?
It was around the golf course, yes. Not necessarily on Prospect Ave.
Anywhere around the golf course. On the West Orange side of the golf course.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Council President Rutherford, do you have any questions?
This time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Uh Mr. Klein, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smiraldo, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Caffr, do you have any questions?
Uh I do have one question. Um I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Woodruff, but um your comments about the landscaping reminded me that I I thought I saw somewhere um that one of the the shrubs that was proposed is actually an invasive species. Is there anyone that can comment on that?
So how about if we condition this on speaking to the forester and make ensuring that there are no invasive species that will be uh planted uh for this application? Can we agree with that? Well, let somebody say yes, please.
Yes.
Yes, I like that. I like affirmative action. Good stuff. Okay, Ms. Capper, is that okay? Good condition?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Mr. Hess, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Woodruff on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Uh Mr. Chairman, you are going to return to uh Vice Chairman Garino for.
I'm sorry, Vice Chairman Garino, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you um very much. Uh it just gets back to me, Mr. Chairman, and to uh Mr. Woodruff. It's and what you say is true, and the improvements are are very nice and beneficial and, you know, aesthetically pleasing and everything else, but it just goes also, it's like and I'm not being altruistic. What I'm saying is is that our township, along with many of the other townships uh in the state of New Jersey, are going to the whole thing of Vision Zero and Complete Streets. West Orange was the leader in Complete Streets. And Complete Streets also talks about as Vision Zero and a roadway roadway like Prospect, which um is a highly traveled road. And we are trying to make West Orange the walkability. And I just keep putting issue as I believe to make this project complete and to make you more of a community involvement and goodwill is to put into the fact of adding sidewalks, whether the manor is going to do something when and ever, but that time will come. And it would be a great benefit and it'd be looked on favorably by the West Orange community, particularly our residents who walk to include sidewalks within your landscaping and in the front of the building. That's that's where I'm coming from. I I may be, you know, pushing the issue, but the fact is we've taken the lead with all our intersections with a lot of our neighborhoods and adding sidewalks where there never were sidewalks before. Now, you're doing new work. So at this opportunity, this would be a great thing to add the sidewalks. And I have to go back to the fact is it is goodwill and it's looked favorably upon the residents, not only of West Orange, but, you know, the next town over, Verona, they walk there too. So I'd like you to consider that. And Mr. Chairman, I don't know how we can put this into wherever you make a decision, but I'm not going to say it anymore, but I would really like to see the issue of sidewalks in this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Garino. Do it. Do any members of the public have any questions? For Mr. Woodruff on his testimony, please raise your hand and be identified.
Uh Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Woodruff.
Thanks, have a good night.
Okay, thank you. And we are now back to Mr. Tremulak. You're up, sir.
That completes our our case, Mr. Chairman. We have no further witnesses or evidence to present.
Thank you. Okay, do any members of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Uh Mr. Chairman, we have an individual uh for oranges. Please uh welcome to the meeting. Please state your uh full name and address for the record and please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Darren Tobia. Uh good evening, Board. I just wanted to commend um Mr. Guarino uh for emphasizing the importance of pedestrian infrastructure here. Um I really hope that the applicant uh considers the importance uh of that. It's more than goodwill, I believe. It's um it's it it really ensures the safety of not only our residents, but uh all all the residents who use this uh very busy uh very busy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public have any questions or have any questions for Mr. Woodruff on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
There, there are no hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll close that portion of the meeting. Okay. So, Ms. McGovern, let's uh review any conditions and then we'll go through the uh.
Well, the first the first condition is that an AED be provided at the refreshment center. Um there also is that the forester must review any noxious trees or vegetation anywhere on the golf course on the West Orange pro- portion of it. And the landscape plan must be reviewed by the forester to make sure that there are no invasive species.
All right, and that the
I think left up in the for the nine one one wireless communication. I didn't know.
I I don't think you need that. I mean, personally, I don't think you need that. I would like to see an AED there. Though, that would make sense. Everybody has a cell phone, and it's not far that from the main clubhouse. Also, they agreed, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Tremulak, that you agreed to uh adopt the memorandum for Ju- June fourth, twenty twenty four from CME Associates, all the recommendations?
Yes, we I think our engineer agreed that he would uh uh comply with the comments and recommendations. There might be a few things he may want to discuss with the engineer, but in the end, you know, we will comply.
Okay, um. Let's go through the, I'll I'll go through the variances for the board and you guys can type in. So the um the two buildings are far enough away based on testimony from the roadway and are consistent with other buildings of the same height in the area. And even though they are accessory structures, the golf course is using them uh and they would like to have a nice visage. There's going to be, based on testimony, mechanics in the uh top portion of the buildings. The C two variance, the benefits outweigh the detriments. Uh personally, I don't see a detriment in this area based on uh it is not vi- visual, there's no visual pact or limited visual pact to the roadway. It's keeping in with the advancement of the zone plan. It's making better for the people of the golf course and their guests. Um there is no detriment to the public good. Uh the wall in front is uh basically, again, from testimony, aesthetically pleasing. It may may, I'm not saying a hundred percent, but may decrease uh car uh car lights to the roadway. The benefits seem to outweigh the detriments. So um I would recommend we give the uh three C two variances. And do any other members of the board have any comment? Oh, and the uh flat roofs would be white roofs. Um the all window panes will be thermopane, low E. Um what else, what else, what else? And would the applicant consider a walkway in front of the site? And you guys talk about that while we go through the uh, do any other members of the board have any other conditions or thoughts?
Uh Mr. Chairman, uh Council President has his hand raised.
Council President Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Fagan. I just wanted to um echo Mr. Guarino's sentiment. I thought that was an outstanding idea. I don't know if it can be required, but um it received just some minor treatment just now. I don't want it to be overlooked if that's something that we can require. Um not just encouraging this project, I think we should. Um so I don't know if 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 this is the right moment to do that, but would certainly um like to amplify what the Vice Chair um suggested just a moment ago with regard to sidewalks.
Council President, this is exactly the right moment to do it. So again, gentlemen, while you're sitting there, you're hearing the thoughts on the board. And uh eventually, we're hoping that in the future you will connect all the way south along your entire property. That would be very helpful. However, uh as much as you can do now, would make a lot of sense. So to that, do any other members of the board have any questions, discussion, comments? Seeing none.
Well, Chairman, I'm going to advocate.
Ms. Caffr first, then Mayor McCartney.
Sure.
Um yeah, just I I agree with Council President Rutherford and also with um Vice Chairman Guarino that now's the time for sidewalks. Um you know, if we, if every time there's a development that comes in, we say, oh, there's there's nothing here, and we're going to wait till the next time. And keep keeps pointing the finger to the next, the next group. We know that there are more developments that are going to come in um along Prospect, and we've been waiting, so uh would really appreciate if if you could put the sidewalks in now.
Okay, um. Does any other member have any other question, comment, or suggestion? Otherwise, Mr. Tremulak, what are your your the thoughts?
Uh I try to speak to that issue on behalf of my client. Um first of all, we're talking about a a long stretch of frontage and a substantial expense if sidewalks were to be put in along the entire golf club property fronting on uh Prospect. And I I don't know whether this is an issue that would really would be within the purview of the county. The county is going to have to review this application.
I I I'm sorry, Mr. Tremiak. I'm thinking right now, just in front of the parking lot where we're starting, a- as Mr. Guarino said, let's let's start in a small area. We don't want to make this a major uh expense, and yes, you do have to speak to the county. However, the area where you're adding the new parking, would that make sense, Mr. Guarino?
In front of the, just in front of the clubhouse?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we could, we we can agree to that.
Okay, i- i- it's a start, and we we appreciate, we appreciate very much uh the discussion and you uh agreeing to this. It it's a, it's a very, very good start. And what else can we say? Um do any?
Uh Mr. Chairman, uh Mayor McCartney had a
Oh, it was the same thing. It was a condition for the sidewalks. I advocate the same thing for the Pedestrian Safety Commission on behalf of this Pedestrian Safety Commission and Vision Zero and Complete Streets and everything that the township has been working toward. I would like to see that as a condition as well.
Excellent, okay.
And Mr. Chairman, uh Council President Rutherford has his hand up.
Council President Rutherford.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I understand the uh financial impact on doing the sidewalks of the entire length of the property to the West Orange, um you know, to the West Orange uh property line. Um but I I do think it's important. It's it's not likely to miss uh Caffr's uh point uh a moment ago. It's not likely that down the road, there will be another um opportunity for us to get these sidewalks so that when the next development actually does come along, that they're all uh tied together. It doesn't really do us much good to have just a portion of the sidewalk that doesn't connect uh to the adjoining properties. And and while it is a tremendous financial, uh it may be a tremendous financial uh cost. I I get that. I don't really know as a layperson, but um I think the risk to public safety outweighs that. Um so and and this is something, you know, at least as long as I am on the planning board, I will be advocating for, along with several of others that have been on the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. And I will remind us that we just had a presentation uh maybe two months ago where we as a town committed uh to being a Vision Zero town. Um this is going to go a long way, I think, in helping in that corridor. Uh thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council President. And I agree with you. That makes a lot of sense. However, I do know that sidewalks cost a lot of money. And I I want you to focus on the application before us because that would make sense that we're seeing this application and we're asking for this, and the golf club has agreed to it. And they're also understanding that as they do projects in the future, maybe they will also consider putting some more sidewalk in as we go forward and eventually uh meet up with other sidewalks in town. So that is our goal and Vision Zero. And uh to the members that are sitting before us uh from the Montclair Country Club, we appreciate your helping out. So the question to the members of the board, um will you, do you want to have complete sidewalks all the way to where their property stops southerly, or can we, or would you like, as I proposed, to have just for the project that we have now, Mr. Klein?
Get them to do it in phases, maybe spread it out over a few years?
Well, as they come as they come for other projects, they can incorporate it into their budget. It would probably make it easier for them to accomplish the goal. There's there, I I understand that we're not talk, we don't talk about dollars and cents, but we have to be mindful of what the club is doing for its members and the township. And it's upgrading, and it's improving traffic, and it's doing a lot of other greenery. So I I want to, I want to strike a balance. It hasn't been here in over a hundred years, and we're moving forward.
Shut up, please.
In phases. Okay, does uh anybody who wants completes, I'm sorry, Mr. Ca- Mr. Cardoza?
No, I would just say that, uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just say that, yes, I echo the sentiment of uh my fellow board members in definitely desiring uh the additional sidewalks um and owing to, you know, uh I would say in agreement with what you've stated regarding the expense and the speed at which, you know, the the rate at which we're moving here uh considering the time that the club has been in operation, um I would just say, yes, your proposal uh regarding just wor- worrying about the frontage, um I would agree with that.
Thank you. Okay, unless there is a disagreement, we'll keep it at the frontage as the as the members of the uh Montclair Country Club Committee.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I I do disagree. Uh I'm not a Mr. Chair, I I do disagree. Uh, I'm not opposed to Mr. Klein's suggestion that it be done in some period of time. But I think we do need to be certain and have a plan for the sidewalk along that entire corridor. We have a major development at the mall uh just down the road. I mean, there's just, and and we have, you know, potential development in other spaces in between. I think we are doing ourselves a disservice if we don't make a plan to do the entire portion, even if it's not all done right now. I think we should be clear about what the timeframe to get it done uh is going to be. And I know we won't, you know, I don't. It may take ten years for them to do another project that would require uh either a variance or some work along that uh particular roadway. Uh, and the last thought I had is, you know, while the golf course has been there for quite some time, uh the town has certainly grown. Um, and we are now moving in a direction to be more walkable and pedestrian friendly. Uh, so I think this is the opportunity for us to at least get the plan. I I, you know, Mr. Klein made, I thought, a reasonable uh, he struck a reasonable balance there. If you don't want to do the entire thing right now for cost purposes, let's figure out what a reasonable timeframe is to get the entire sidewalk done. That would be my recommendation.
Uh, Mr. Cardoza.
Um, I'm sorry, I was muted. Can, Mr. Chairman, can we skip, clarify the scope of, you know, what we as a board can really do? I mean, our our this, we're basically pulling among ourselves for.
Uh, Mr. Cardoza, good question. So I'm gonna ask Ms. McGovern. Um, we have an application before us for a a small portion of the frontage of the club. Can we now say we want the rest of it done also?
I'm looking through your site plan ordinance and I think I need help from either Mr. Hess or um Mr. Hazel in terms of, I don't see something in the site plan ordinance that obligates an applicant um to put a sidewalk in unless, um, and I don't know, wonder what criteria, if they're not working in that area. So I have some concern with that. Um, I also have a concern with your suggestion that you do a partial sidewalk because I don't know how anybody figures out how big that is unless the board specifies a hundred feet, two hundred feet, or whatever the length would be so that it can be enforced. Um, uh.
I I I think it's gonna be easier to specify a length based on that parking structure that with the fifteen new spots from driveway to, or from driveway to driveway.
So so what you're suggesting is a sidewalk along Prospect Avenue. Um, and it, I don't know what that length of frontage is. It seems very long when you drive by it. Um. But so you'd have it in the middle of the block and there wouldn't be sidewalk on either side. And the concept would be, they come back next time, there's gonna be another chunk of sidewalk added to it. So you're putting them on notice that this is going to be required, even though it might be something on the far end of the golf course?
Yes.
Some.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
It's Alan Tremulak. Can I just?
Yes, Mr. Tremulak, go right ahead, sir.
Be here briefly. Um, I mean, I would, I was going to make the point that Ms. McGovern just made it, and that unless there's a specific requirement in your site plan ordinance that sidewalks be installed uh in as part of a site plan, I I don't think it's legal, I don't think it's fair or legally appropriate to put that burden on the golf club if it's not in your ordinance that would apply to to all uh applicants for site plan approval. Um, and certainly, um the sidewalks have nothing to do with the variances that we're seeking. Um, you know, so I don't think you can require that as a condition to grant you to granting the variances that we've saw. So I think it is appropriate since we have presented a site plan that provides for, you know, substantial reconfiguring of the uh portion of the property in front of the, of the main clubhouse that we provide sidewalks in that area. But I don't think it's fair to require that we bear the burden of putting in sidewalks in along the entire stretch of property that has nothing to do with this application. I understand what the town's trying to do. And and I think it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a good objective. A lot of towns are trying to accomplish, you know, uh Vision Zero. Um, but again, I I don't think it's, it's, it's fair to impose that burden on this applicant.
Thank you. So what I'm going to suggest, there there's two suggestions. My suggestion would be to have it from uh entranceway to entranceway in the front of the area where the uh new uh parking spaces will be. And in the future, we will discuss again, or as our ordinances change, um, when, when the golf club comes back to us, we can talk about more and they're, they're on notice. Uh, Mr. Klein.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I I'd like to point out, Ms. Ms. Caffrey also has her hand raised.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein.
You wanna go first, Lori? Go ahead. I didn't see you. It's the color blended in with you.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, just, just a quick question. Um, I, I believe that we do have a a complete streets checklist. I'm not sure how that is incorporated into our ordinance or if that's part of the, you know.
Really not. It it it's a suggestion, it's a suggestion, but it's not part of our site plan ordinance that you must do X or must do Y.
Okay.
So one day it may be, and we'll have to revisit that in the future, but it's a good question. But for right now, it's, we're focusing on this area and um the board had, Mr. Klein.
Can we do it in the sections where they're putting in the new wall? There's a few places, right? At least, at least you can measure, okay, there's a wall. Put it in front of the wall. Another wall, put it in front of the wall. Yeah.
That's a great suggestion.
That's a good suggestion.
Yes, Mr. Tremulak.
That's acceptable to the club.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you. So there's, so there's two suggestions. Um, Council President Rutherford, would you, would you agree with that, or do you still want the board to, uh, do you want to query the board about uh mandate? Now, realize that the law, the law and ordinance is not with us on this.
So I certainly understand that. I also think having this conversation in public in a recorded session in a meeting where we're talking about pedestrian safety also is an issue for me as a council person. God forbid if something were to go wrong. So I I would like to see it um the entire length of the property. Uh, I am happy to figure out ways we can be helpful to the golf club to get that done. Um, I'm I'm sure the mayor uh has more knowledge about the different ways we can be helpful uh to them. Uh, but I would certainly like to see that done. I I know there are other um properties that are going to be developed. I'm looking forward to getting it done there. I will certainly bring it uh on the tenth to the town council to update our ordinance uh so that going forward, we do have the tools. Um, but I do think it's important that since we have this before us, we begin moving in that direction. Uh, so I would like to see it around the, I mean, uh, along the entire length of the of the property to the West Orange property line.
Fair enough. What I'll do now is I'm gonna poll the board. There's two options. One, to go along the wall uh that's being, that's being put up, or two, to uh mandate the entire uh length of the golf club.
Mr. Chairman, I, can I ask a quick question? Because, you know, I'm listening. I'm listening to all these, you know, and I think this is a good conversation we're having. But we don't even know what the linear feet is of actual sidewalk that has to be put in. So we have.
Over two thousand feet.
Right. It's a linear feet. And I just looked up an article, Forbes Magazine, the, the February twenty eighth to twenty twenty four. Forbes Magazine says it's between six and twelve dollars a square foot, so average nine dollars square foot. That's an expense that and this, this applicant came forward to, to talk to us and agreed to certain. I agree with everybody about this. Me of all people, you know, I agree with safety. I mean, that's just my nature. Um, but I think in fairness, uh, this is one of the things we have to take that into account. Two thousand linear feet is a long stretch of cement. So, um.
So what I'm going, and it also.
I just wanna, I just wanna put that out before we have our, our discuss, uh, final discussion, who's gonna say what. Just make sure we have facts in front of us. That's, that's my point.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
And it also impacts a lot of landscaping as you get further south.
Yes.
So there, yeah, there may be a dead tree. They take the dead tree out. They can put sidewalk in. But if you go a little further south, it's a nice screen for their parking lot that's there before you get to the end of their property. So.
Let's, let's focus, let's focus, as you said, on the, the foot wall that's being put up. And so there's, there's two possibilities. Um, I'm gonna poll the board. Please raise your hand if you want the entire site to have a sidewalk.
Well, eventually I would like it, but for now.
In this, in this, okay, Mr. Klein, in this application, what they have agreed to was to put a sidewalk by the foot wall that they're proposing, the three-foot foot wall. So if you want that as a condition, please raise your hand.
I I'm, I'm confused, sir. Are we voting on which part it is now?
Okay.
Is it the entire length or just the portion?
If you want, if you want the sidewalk just by the foot wall as uh they have agreed to at this moment, at this moment. That will be the length of the sidewalk. Please raise your hand. So you have one, two, three, five, five. Okay, if you want at this time to have a condition of the entire sidewalk, the entire property have a sidewalk, please raise your hand.
Can we combine that into a, for now, we'd like five hundred feet, but we'd like you to.
No, 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 because we don't, we don't have that tool. It, it, we don't have that tool.
So if we ask them to do all two thousand feet of it and they say no.
That's right. Nothing gets done.
But if we, but if we, we ask them to do it in front of the wall, it's hard for them to say no. They're already working.
Well, they've already agreed. They already agreed.
They've agreed to it. I just wanna have both, everybody on the board have their say. Okay, so the proponent, Mayor McCartney.
Yeah, Chairman, it's an awkward question because yes, we would like to see a sidewalk along the whole length of the property. It doesn't sound like legally uh we are capable of doing that. So my recommendation would be to ask the pedestrian safety commission to present an ordinance to the council.
In the future, in the future, but for, but for tonight.
So I don't believe that right now, though we would like to see that happen, we are not legally able to request that of them.
So tonight, tonight, they have agreed to something. We agree to it as a board. Thank you for the, the wonderful discussion. It makes a lot of sense. The club had, the club has heard our thoughts for the future. And to that end, I make a motion, we approve PB.
Mr. Chair, before you, before you go further, I just wanted to know what the result of the second, the vote count on the second vote was?
Two people voted in favor of the entire site.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, but to that point, I believe that it would be unanimous that the whole board would like to see that. I just don't think we're legally.
Yes, yes.
Capable of doing that at that time.
They're, they're, they're a very good uh group of people in town. And we want to not uh encumber them with something uh that is, they didn't think about. They're adding to the project and they have heard us and they know what the future will bring. So uh we're working together in a partnership here and we always, the board always wants to make sure we have a good partnership. So we have a vision and we have uh an action plan. So to that end, I make a motion, we approve PB twenty four dash oh four Montclair Golf Club Block one fifty one, last thirty one, Zone R two, twenty five Prospect Avenue, the, with the three variances, as stated, based on the testimony of the three experts and our review of the documentation provided by Mr. Hess and Mr. Hazel. And with conditions, do I have a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Garino seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
No, uh, Chairman Rutherford, I'm sorry, Council President Rutherford.
I'm sorry, you can't vote, sir, on this.
I'm sorry, I, 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 that was mumbled. I, I'm not clear what was just said.
We have Council President Rutherford. You weren't here for the entire testimony. So even though you can uh ask questions and put in comments, you can't vote on this.
Understood.
That, please. Okay, Yamalat, on the, on the motion.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Murado?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes, Mr. Tremulak and members of the uh Montclair Country Club, we want to thank you very much for your time, your effort, and the movement forward. Have a wonderful evening. We're going to take a five-minute bio break now.
I guess I will never be a, I guess I I get, yeah, we did. I guess I'll never be a.
Mr. Guarino, you're, you're not on mute.
Oh.
Very good stuff. We have, this is done. This is done. This is about this. This is my thing. This is preparing. Ba 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 ba. Ba 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 ba. Okay. This is ba ba ba. And ba ba ba. Okay. Ready? Okay. Okay. Uh, okay, uh, ladies and gentlemen, are we uh? We all here?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, back on the record, please. Ladies and gentlemen, PB twenty four dash oh six four ten Main Street Holding LLC. Block one one three lot two sixty two, two sixty four and three oh eight four ten Main Street. Applicant is proposing a three story mixed use development with twelve residential dwelling units above ground floor parking and commercial space for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jason Tuvell, attorney for the applicant, four ten Main Street Holdings LLC. As you indicated, this is an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances for a mixed use building to be located at the property. Currently, the property is vacant. Before that, there was a uh two story dwelling located there, but has since been raised from the property, so it's currently a vacant site. Um, the proposal, as you indicated, is a mixed use building consisting of twelve residential units over ground floor retail of or commercial space of nine hundred square feet um and thirteen parking spaces. Uh, the project is really a outcome of the master plan recommendations that the township had back in twenty nineteen to revitalize um the commercial corridors, and this is this is a B two zone. And in several areas, and obviously we'll get to this during planning testimony at some point. Um, the the master plan and the board made recommendations to revitalize these types of sites in the in the commercial corridors and really encourages mixed use development. So what happened then in twenty after the twenty nineteen master plan reexamination report, uh, the municipality adopted an ordinance that amended its conditional use standards and permits in business and industrial districts, and this being a business district, uh, mixed use developments such as this, but you have to meet four criteria of the conditional use standards, which is why we're in front of the planning board. We meet all four of them. But specifically, it was really the size of the property that the governing body felt um would permit these types of mixed use properties. Um, and the size of the property being a lot size of five thousand square feet or greater and also having minimum street frontage of of at least fifty feet. So we have that here. Um, this is a corner lot. Um, it also has significant topographical challenges that you'll hear about during the course um of the testimony. Um, we've had the ability to look at uh the review letter from CME. Obviously, we'll we'll deal with it during the meeting. But we did respond to it. Uh, we we take no exception with any of the items set forth therein. And I believe we did, we did uh respond to most of the of the items in there. Um, but if we didn't, well, obviously we will do that and provide testimony where we're warranted. Um, the variances that we're seeking, we do have a, we do have several C variances that we're seeking. And what you'll hear during the testimony is that those variances are really driven by the fact that a mixed use development needs proper retail space, you know, adequate um com adequate residential space and parking. So juggling those three things and the vision that the that the township had for these types of uh developments really necessitates the variances that we're seeking and we'll go over that. It is a three story building, but it's three stories because of the topography on Main Street, but towards the rear where it abuts or is adjacent to residential properties, it actually is a two story building. So the topography allows for the building to get a little bit smaller or look or appear smaller as the building um goes towards the res towards the the res the residential um development. One last thing, and then I'll I'll obviously turn it over to our our witnesses, Mr. Chairman, is that um the master plan also encouraged that the municipality revisit the parking standards for mixed use developments that's set forth there. Um, it didn't, it didn't um act on that yet. However, RSIIS, which governs your, which is in your ordinance and also governs residential properties, um, was slightly amended in November of twenty twenty three to really to be a maximum. So whatever is set forth in RSIIS for mid rise residential buildings are now a maximum. The the governing, the planning board could still require that maximum, but what the what the state did is essentially say, look, RSIIS may not be a one size fits all for all municipalities. And in certain areas where you may be close to mass transit, where you may have been closer to a downtown, a municipality should take it or planning board should take into those factors and possibly reduce the parking limitation as set forth in your uh master plan. And in fact, if you provide less parking, which we are doing per than RSIIS requires, an applicant does not require a de minimis exception any longer from from RSIIS. So there was a, there was an amendment to the state legislation as well. We'll get into that in Mr. Malts's testimony when he um when he gets when he gets up to the board. So, Mr. Chairman, I have four witnesses that I plan on calling. Obviously, we're probably not going to get to all those tonight. Um, we have our an architect, our traffic engineer, civil engineer and professional planner. Um, so with that, the first witness I'd like to call in this context, because it's more of a downtown type project, is our architect, Brittany Clem with Mystery Design. So, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I'd like to call to call her up.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Miss Clem, would you put raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, Brittany, if you could just give the board the benefit of your qualifications as an architect, um educational background, licenses held and experience testifying before uh land use boards in the state of New Jersey.
Um, I'm an associate at Mystery Design, which is located at three fifty Clark Drive in Bud Lake, New Jersey. I hold a Bachelor of Science and a Master's of Architecture, both from Northeastern University. I've been licensed since two thousand twelve. My license is in good standing. And I've testified uh before various municipalities throughout the state, but not West Orange yet.
Okay, welcome to West Orange. Unless the members of the board have any questions, uh, we accept Ms. Clem as an art licensed architect in state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mind if I share my screen?
All right. So so Brittany, I know you you're looking at the civil drawings here, but let's just, before we get into the nitty gritty of the architecture, if you could just orient the board and the public to where the site is located, some of the characteristics of the site that um influence your design, and then we can get into the proposal.
Okay, um, so as Mr. Tava has said, I am uh showing this civil drawing, but this is to orient us, orient us toward the site.
Just reference the sheet just for the record that you're looking at.
This is the cover page of the civil plan. It is, um, you have a number. Of course, it has a uh pop up that comes in.
T one.
Hold on. Thank you. Sorry. The pop up was covered by my Zoom. Um, all right. So to start off, we are in the B two zone. And it we are along Main Street at the corner of Park Drive North, shown this map. The tract is eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty six square feet. It is approximately one hundred and thirty four linear feet along Main Street and approximately eighty five linear feet along Park Drive North. It comprises of these three properties shown here and um, the site is surrounded currently by uh traditional commercial properties along Main Street to the north. Uh, these buildings do abut their property lines on Main Street. And to the south, there are a few townhouses, followed by a Dunkin' Donuts and a gas station across the street. The subject property um contained a two and a half story frame building, but these improvements have been demolished. Uh, the next thing I'd like to acknowledge is the grade changes. There's a substantial grade change going um from Main Street up Park Drive North. It is about fifteen feet vertically. And um there's currently a retaining wall along uh the property line on Main Street and uh partially along Park Drive North as well. And this will be largely eliminated by our design. Going to switch over to the architectural drawings. I have four architectural drawings that I'm going to share. The first is um a rendering.
All right. So Brittany, should we mark this as as an exhibit?
We can, yes. This was um submitted as well.
Okay, was submitted. Okay, fine. So uh counsel, if if you want us to mark it, we can, since it was submitted, I think it's part of the application.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I'm gonna get, sorry. I'm gonna get out and get back in. I can't see the screen. It just says Brittany Clem has started screen sharing and I keep getting Zoom quit unexpectedly. So.
Do you want me to stop and reshare?
No, no, it's 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 me. I'm gonna get out and get back in. So hopefully it'll work.
Mr. Chairman, do you want us to wait some?
Okay, while Mr. Klein is coming back in. While he's coming in, I want to do some housekeeping. There's two pictures. There's two renderings. So why don't we call the first one? We'll mark them separate so we know which one you're talking about. So we'll call the first rendering um color. It's the color rendering that we have. We'll do that as A one and then the second one will be A two.
Great.
Very good.
And Brittany, just indicate the perspective that the board is seeing.
This is um from the from Main Street at the corner of Park Drive North.
Oh, sure, sure. No problem. Yeah, we won't get into substance. Comes back. That's fine.
Thank you.
So this page will be A one.
Better. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, Mr. Klein, you back? You got it?
I'm back. I can see. Thank you.
Good deal. Okay, go right ahead, Ms. Clem.
Got it, Brittany.
All right, um, this view that I'm showing was just marked as um exhibit A one. It is a view of the front of the building along Main Street at the corner of Park Drive North. We're proposing a mixed use building with a residential tenant lobby and a commercial entry on Main Street. There's vehicular and pedestrian access to the parking garage along Park Drive North. We're proposing a storefront, uh, a series of storefronts along most of Main Street to create a pedestrian connection. This is the area I was explaining before um currently has a retaining wall. The materials include um brick, veneer stone, lap lap siding and composite trim. The building is three stories tall along Main Street. And we're creating a viable Main Street building that will also respect the adjacent residential properties behind it. Now, this um we can mark as A two.
Sure.
Um, this is the view of the rear of the building. Due to the existing site grading, as I previously described, the building is shorter in the rear. The bill, the um parking level is recessed eight feet in this area. From this view, the building um reads more as a two story building. And the materials um are consistent with the front of the building and wrap.
Yeah, and Brittany, I know you'll probably get into this more later, but just just to guide everyone as they're listening, the parking area is not visible from the public. Is that correct? It's completely screened?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay.
Um, on to sheet A two point oh one. This sheet shows the first floor plan, typical upper floor plan and roof plan, as well as providing the square footage and the unit count chart. The applicant is uh proposing to build a twenty five thousand seven hundred square foot building. It'll be eight thousand eight hundred square feet on the ground floor and slightly smaller on each floor above. There are twelve um twelve units and um thirteen parking spaces with one nine hundred square foot commercial space. On the first floor, I can zoom in a little so we can see it a little closer. That's better. Um. On the ground, on the first four ground floor, we have the commercial space, uh trash termination room, the lobby space, which has a lower lobby as well as an upper lobby that connects to the interior parking garage as um as well as stairs for circulation and utility space, which also reach storage, which will just be used for um for management storage, not for tenant use. The parking will be described in more detail by uh traffic and civil.
All right, and just I I know that that we'll we'll get into more detail. The trash is not accessed down there. It'll only be accessed on the first floor by maintenance. There'll be trash chutes for the upper levels on each floor, correct?
Correct, yes. So going going up, um, this is a typical upper level floor. There are six units on each floor for a total of two one bedroom units, two one bedroom plus den units and eight two bedroom units. All the units contain kitchen, living space, bedroom, bathroom, washer dryers. The unit sizes for the one bedrooms are eight hundred and thirty nine square feet. One bedroom with den is nine hundred and twelve square feet. And the two bedrooms range from one thousand eighty three square feet to one thousand two hundred and thirty one square feet. The units also have um hot water heaters in them and the HVAC system is PTAC, which is shown on the plans and the elevations and the renderings. The buildings um are designed and constructed to meet the latest fire building and accessibility codes. The buildings will be fully sprinkled and have a fire alarm system. All areas of the building are ADA accessible. There will be um energy efficient windows, appliances and plumbing fixtures. Um, up on the, oh, switch to the roof plan. On the roof, um, we will have a white flat roof to reduce the heat island effect. There will be um an elevator penthouse, which usually sticks up about two to three feet above the roof surface. Um, there are two small rooftop units proposed. Those are used for the common areas and the commercial tenant HVAC. These elements will all be screened by the parapet walls. And they will not be visible by adjacent tenant, adjacent buildings or from the ground. Um, I know one of the questions was about deliveries. Um, deliveries will take place on um on the street level on Main Street. I know there's a bus stop. I think uh the traffic engineer will will address exactly how uh the bus stop works, but generally um there is parking on Main Street and deliveries can occur through that as long as they are not in the uh public transit um bus stop. There'll be a key fob system as well as cameras and uh mail and packages will come in through the lobby, which is consistent with uh other properties along Main Street, other commercial properties. Which is consistent with uh other properties along Main Street, other commercial properties. Each residential floor, as we discussed, has a trash chute. And the trash will be um brought to that chute from each unit as well as recycle cans and um. The building manager will collect the recycling and bring it down on a regular schedule to the trash termination room for later collection. Uh, the trash and recycle will be picked up along Main Street by private hauler. The collection, um, the attendee will roll out the dumpsters for collection. Once the refuse is collected, the vehicle will continue forward along Main Street. No turnaround and they will not, they will not go up Park Drive North.
And Brittany, the uh, the commercial space and the residential share of the trash room, correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay.
Um, as well, the, the frequency of collection will be two times a week. Which is standard for a multifamily apartment building of this size and it can be adjusted if necessary. Then I move on to the elevations. These are the two, the two D elevations that correspond to the uh three D renderings I showed previously. And they show um the finishes and the heights along all four sides of the building. The property sits at the corner of Main Street and Park Drive North, as we know. The residential lobby is in the center of the front elevation shown here. And the commercial entry is on the right side. With the trash entry between it. The ele, the elevations help to demonstrate the grading on the site. The residential lobby is set at two hundred and forty one point four feet. On Main Street. The grade rises toward Park Drive North. And then the grade at the vehicular parking garage entry is at two hundred and forty eight point five feet. In the rear of the building, it is at two hundred and fifty six point five feet um back here where the uh where the door exits. The difference, um, the difference between the lowest point and highest point is just over fifteen feet in grade change. Um, so we have the storefront, sorry, the storefronts that are along Main Street, which help provide the pedestrian scale. And communicate and connection. The building entrance is easily identifiable as well as the commercial space. And there will be um. Uh tinted film applied for the trash room and to the upper portions of the windows.
And Brittany, you already hit on uh some of the conditional use criteria. There's only four of them. But you, but just to be clear, uh, the ground floor tenant, whether the commercial tenant will be one of the permitted uses noted in item one of the um conditional use standards. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, um, obviously, have we have one or more dwelling units on upper floors? That that's correct, right?
Mm hmm. Yes.
And um the access, and I think you just explained this, the access to the upper floors for uses shall be provided by means of a separate entrance. Then provided for the ground floor uses and they they have separate entrances, correct?
Correct. They do. Yes.
All right. And you already indicated in your introduction that we meet the minimum lot size requirement and the frontage requirements.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um. And I'm going to zoom in a little on this front elevation. Um. We have compliance signage shown along Main Street. We have two. Fifteen square foot signs, one over the residential entry and one over the commercial entry. And then going to the Park Drive. Side, we have one um five square foot sign. To identify the building number at the main door to the parking garage. And as well in this area, we have um the caution vehicle exit sign, which was a recommendation of um of sprab.
And Brittany, just to be clear, the door to the garage will be closed at all times except when opened by K FOB by uh somebody with access, correct?
Correct. Yes, we're, we're proposing a um a door and a. Access system. Correct.
And that's as well as for the regular door that you would come in as a pedestrian, right?
Yes, all the doors will be locked in with a key fob system. So you'd have to have um that for access.
And and the also, the, the owner operator will also have a- access cameras around the entire building and in the garage.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that concludes the testimony I have unless you have any other questions for me, Mr. Tavell.
No, I think we're good. I wanted to make sure that we. Any also, any of the items set forth in the CME letter that relate to architecture that. I think you covered most of them that you perhaps may have missed. You'll comply with, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We can, we will comply.
All right. And Mr. Chairman and members of the board, obviously, the um, the other witnesses will address the other comments set forth um in 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 the letter. Um, so I turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Yeah, while we're waiting, just one other item, I guess, too, that Brittany, you just might not, Harold will cover this as well, our traffic engineer, but. We do have the requisite um EV charging stations in the garage. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, just so we get that on the record. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, done?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, um. Okay. Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions?
Um, we'll be getting to traffic engineering shortly, won't we, Mr. Chairman? Uh, Mr. George.
I believe so.
Okay.
Mr. Tuvell, are we getting into traffic engineering?
Yeah, I um, I was gonna actually, because um the architect already explained the ground floor plan and circulation, I was gonna go to the traffic engineer next to kind of. Expand on that a little further.
That's fine. We'll get there. Thank you. Okay, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions? Mayor McCartney? Okay, we'll come back to mayor. Council President Rutherford, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um. The interior driveway, uh, it's ingress and egress on. On uh one side of the building. Uh, first question is, what is the width of that?
Twenty uh. Twenty two feet.
So, so it is wide enough if a car were to be try to, try to exit. For uh while a car, another car is trying to enter for both of them to. Maneuver through that door at the same time?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, it is designed for two way.
Yeah, and council president also, I was gonna, it's a good question, and I think it actually came up in one of the letters, and I was gonna have Mr. Maltz as our traffic expert um go through that as well.
Excellent. Um. So I'm curious as to why. You, you didn't have the exit on the other side of the building.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Ms. Clem, can you share your screen again for this portion?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think Brittany, maybe the site plan might be the better uh exhibit for this, or your first, your first floor plan, I think is fine.
I'm looking at A two dot zero one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, so you just yep that one.
Not letting me zoom in. Here we go. Sorry.
So it's a one way street, uh Park Drive. I think that's Park Drive.
Mm hmm.
Uh. Send north on that side, Park Drive North?
Park Drive North, correct.
It's, that's a one way street. It's a loop. So you're gonna have people come in and out. Of that, that side and then go around the entire block. Why not have the exit on the other side of the building?
I think, I, again, I I'm sorry to interrupt. I think it's a better question for the traffic engineer because he could, he could speak to. You know, the anticipated trip generation and, you know, how pedestrian and vehicular, you know, movements will work together. So I'm not trying to avoid it. I just. Think he'd be the more, the proper professional to answer. That's all.
Or is there something structurally that prevents you from having cars? Exit on the other side of the building?
Brittany, is, can you answer that?
We, we are limited due to the grading. Grading is a, is a big issue. Um. The. The parking is seven feet higher than the elevation at Main Street.
So structurally, it's, there's an impediment to exiting on Park Drive South.
Um, yes.
I've counted these and I, you know, I admit my eyes are not what they used to.
There's a building on the other side of it. Guys, there's a building on the other side of this.
Correct. It's not, it's not surrounded by Park Drive North and Park Drive South.
Right.
There is another property.
Right, so.
It's a corner lot, but not pre-signed.
That's right.
Yep. This abuts another building.
Yep, I recall now.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if Mr. Klein is trying to talk, but he's unmute. I think he was trying to.
Mr. Klein, you're on mute?
A couple of times.
No, Jason, that's my thing. I like to, to make faces and I get in trouble for it.
Up to you. It's okay.
I'll, I'll do both. I'll mute and I.
Um. You, so I'm sorry, I'm going back to my notes so that I still have the microphone. Is that right, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry.
We have, we have twelve units in this property. Uh. And is it twelve or thirteen parking spaces?
There are thirteen and they're going to be um addressed in more detail by the traffic engineer.
So I only see twelve on your, oh, I do see thirteen. Okay, one, one handicap. And twelve regular parking spaces.
That's correct, Council President. That's correct.
So at the far end of the building where the handicap uh parking spot is, there, there are two spots there. Is that? Enough radius for? Uh, the, the parked car that would not be in the handicap spot to back out? Uh, if a car was in the handicap spot? I mean, do we know what that kind of? Uh, radius, you know, required is for that?
Mm hmm. Um, that will be answered by the civil engineer.
That's it for me. Um, so far. Thank you.
Mayor McCartney?
Mm hmm. Oh, thank you, Chairman. Sorry for the lapse there. I had to go from my laptop to my phone. Uh, I wanted to say that. Uh, I guess I, I was under the impression that all of these twelve units would be of smaller. Uh, dimensions like the eight hundred and thirty nine or the nine twelve. I was not expecting to hear the two bedrooms. So that would explain that variance of the twelve units. Um, I thought it could manage with the thirteen parking spaces. The two bedrooms um. Now have become concerning to me. And I'm just wondering if we're coming out on Park Drive North. Is that a one way? Do residents now have to come out? Can they make a right onto Main Street or do they have to go up and around Park Drive to exit on Park Drive South? That may be a question for the traffic engineer, but. It's raising a question. And I also want to raise the concern that there was, though not designated, a historic building on this site that was demolished. And what is being proposed is really. A cold, un aesthetically pleasing building. Right on our Main Street. So that's more commentary than a question, but. Just feel disappointed in this. Sorry to say.
Okay, um. Mr. Klein?
And will there be anything addressed about the lighting in the parking garage?
Brittany, do you, do you have, can you address that?
Um, yes, there will be lighting within the parking garage. All the, all the lighting is building mounted. There's no pole mounted lighting. Anywhere on the site, um, and it will be addressed in more detail with the civil engineer.
So then, again, with the traffic engineer, if there is a variance for parking, then where would the retail space? Where would the parking be available for the retail space?
I think we have to wait for the traffic engineer for all of that.
Okay, and one more question, just curious. Uh, has there been any consideration about going taller with this building? Would that? I, I understand it would be a variance, but would that provide additional parking if the building? Were proposed to be taller?
Um, I don't believe so. Within this footprint, it would be difficult to get a ramp. For additional levels.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Mr. Klein?
I'm sorry if I missed it. Did you talk about the materials? Is it gonna be real brick or just brick face? Is it gonna be hardy board or something like that? Did you talk about the materials?
Sure, I'll go back to that. Um.
Listen, I'm sorry.
So we have, um, I'll start at the bottom and work my way up. So at the bottom, we have a stone veneer, which was added at the recommendation of sprab. And then we have full brick for uh the majority of the first floor. And brick continues up in uh in select areas, all full brick, no thin brick. And then we have lap siding and composite trim at the windows. And a uh, a um beige harness at the top of the brick portions.
Thank you. Tell me again why you're blocking out the. The upper portions of the windows on the first floor? You said you were block, blacking them out or doing some kind of treatment on the upper portion?
We're gonna have, um, we're going to have a. Tinting or opaque film on the top portion of the windows as well as on the trash room door. To block visibility. So in the trash room, you wouldn't want to have a view into that, but also on the top. Um, it's for uh mechanical and so that there's space. Um, above the ceiling to function.
Oh, okay. Oh, the, the drop ceiling will be down to the line.
Yes.
And above that will be, oh, I got you. Okay, no.
Yeah, it's because this is a, this is a tall space here. So we extended the storefront. To make it more aesthetically pleasing, but that top portion will be um, will have an opaque film.
Okay. Can you go back to a, a floor plan that shows, I guess it's either a one bedroom with a den or something that shows a den?
Sure. So there are only two units that have the den and it is this unit two O two. As well on the third floor, it will be unit three O two. And so I can walk you through the plan. I'll zoom in a little bit more.
So, so the den has, the den has no windows?
The den has no windows.
Okay.
It is seven foot ten by thirteen foot one and it does not have a doorway. It has a um larger than five foot opening.
Okay. All right. So that really couldn't be made into a bedroom, certainly not legally.
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just can I just go back to one of the questions that the mayor had uh regarding the height? That's okay. I just wanted.
Uh, Mr. Klein, are you done? Wait, Mr. Klein, are you done?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm done. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm finished.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to address that because it's um, just so we're, we're on the same page there. So the, the maximum height permitted in the zone is thirty five feet. We're, we're at thirty four point two. So the most that we could go, I mean, we, we could seek a C variance, for example, but the most we could go is thirty eight point four feet. Without it going to this board of adjust, without it being a board of adjustment because of the ten percent requirement. So. The only, we can evaluate it, obviously, but the only wiggle room we would have and still stay at this board is approximately. Uh, four feet, like roughly four feet.
Thank you, Mr. Tavell.
Sure. Where are you measuring the building from?
Average grade. Let me show you here. On the Main Street elevation, you can see average grade is at two hundred and fifty one point one six feet. And then the top of roof. Is um thirty seven feet above the first floor slab. Actually, no, it's above, sorry, it's above that. Um, and so for the total of thirty four foot four inches.
So you're measuring the average, I'm looking at your lines, the average grade is higher. Uh, I'm sorry.
It's around the whole, around the whole building.
Um, I, I, eventually I'm gonna ask Mr. Hess to tell us what the ordinance is because we have a specific way of measuring. I know we've gone through this before. I, I want to hear what Mr. Hess has to say, but okay, keep going. I'm sorry.
That's in, that's done in coordination with the civil engineer who follows the town ordinances as far as how the um. How the average grade is determined, because sometimes it is right at the property line. Sometimes it's ten feet out, ten feet in.
That's what I want to hear from our expert. But it's okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mrs. Moraldo?
Yes, uh, Chairman, uh. So going back to, uh, first of all, you stated earlier, I'm gonna go over a lot of the fire stuff. Um. You said everything's gonna be in compliance with the firewall code and everything else. The garage. You said sprinklers. Is that gonna be a wet system or a dry system? Is it gonna be heating there?
Uh, presumably inside the garage will be a dry system. There will be heat um in the ceiling for. The underside of the um. Of the structure above. To keep, you know, keep um from freezing with the. to keep, you know, keep, um, from freezing with the plumbing that comes through, but, uh, I believe the system in the garage is usually dry. But the entire building is sprinkled, not just the parking.
Okay, um, and what is the total bedroom count? I know you gave the.
The total bedroom count, so eight times two is sixteen, plus another fourth, so twenty bedrooms.
So twenty bedrooms and thirteen parking spaces, and retail, that's my question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, um, what is the height on the third floor to the roof? The whole total ceiling height, because you said there's, I guess, there's a plenum above the apartment.
Ceiling, yes, the ceiling heights, um, will be nine feet within the units.
Okay, and then what's?
Ceiling height, and, um, typically, the structure is, uh, wood truss, about eighteen inches or so, and then the roof is usually sloped to allow for drainage.
Okay, so I'm looking at, um, this is what page, uh, I'm sorry, I, I zoomed in, the, the, uh, the one with the roof plan and the, and the floor plan and everything else, that, that picture? Uh, I'm, yeah, that one, yeah, so I'm looking at the roof plan right there, to me, that looks like a scuttle hole on the top, left, correct?
Oh, sorry. Um.
That's scuttle, nope.
Yes, there'll be, there will be downspouts along the rear.
Okay, so, um, roof access, I'm talking about scuttle hole, I'm sorry.
Oh, 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 yes, 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 uh, I thought you said scupper, um, yes, there is a, there is a hatch. The hatch is coming out of the rear stair.
What's, what's the dimension of the hatch?
Uh, usually, five, four by four or five by five.
Okay, um, and all the mechanicals are up on the roof, right?
Yes, there'll be, the units will have their own mechanicals, but these will be for the common areas and for the commercial spaces, a code requirement that, that you bring fresh air into the common, uh, corridors.
Okay, so, so, looking at your plans, you have staircases coming up in the basement all over to the third floor, can you incorporate a third, another staircase up to the roof? And put up, um, an accessway that way, instead of getting rid of the scupper or the scuttle, it just says scuttle hole?
Um, it's possible, but that's gonna raise our, uh, well, actually, but I think we're allowed, I think we're allowed to go above, we are allowed to bring a stair up, uh, by code.
But, uh, I have a problem with the scuttle hole, because one, it's access for the fire department, and two, you have roof maintenance, you've got people climbing vertically, nine, ten, eleven feet, whatever, with tools, equipment, slips, falls, and things of that nature, so I have, I have a, a, a problem with that, I would, I would want to make that a condition, that a staircase, right, instead of a scuttle hole. Um, so that, that was my question on that, I think all the rest I have is related to, um, traffic and everything else, I don't want, uh, delay this, but I, I'm, I'm happy with everything else, so, so far, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just piggyback, can I just piggyback on this scuttle? So, if you do have a real stairwell there, are you gonna see that from the neighbor's side? Like, if that thing was in the middle of, of the roof, it wouldn't be a problem, but it's all the way to the side where there, there's a neighbor, I don't know what the elevation, are they gonna see that protrusion in the roof?
Yeah, they would, I, I would think they would.
Yeah, right, I mean, I don't know, height-wise, I don't know if they're above it or below it, I don't know, I can't tell.
I, I, but I, I, I defer to safety over the neighbor's aesthetics, so, I mean, it's.
No, no, I guess my question was gonna be, is there a way to move it a little further in, but it's gonna mess it up.
I don't, I don't, yeah, looking at it. Looking at it, I don't think so, the, the, but, uh, yeah, I just, unless they want to. No, it would, I'm, I'm trying to get into, within the code, we'll make sure we, you know, we're preventing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and you'll, you'll, you'll dress it up to make it look like, whatever, you know, whether it's brick or it's, uh, you know, siding, yeah, okay.
Okay, Mr. Morgan?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Cardoza?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Ms. Clint, can we start with the, um, first floor?
Yes.
Okay. Um, looking at the commercial space, is there, there's no restroom there?
The commercial space is not designed at this time, it will have a restroom.
Okay.
I assume that will probably show, um, rough in for it, at the time of, you know, if, assuming this moves forward, at the time of construction documents, we would usually provide for a space, nine hundred square feet, we would usually provide one uh, one toilet room.
Okay, uh, looking at the trash room, the only entry, you know, uh, point of ingress and egress is that door, is the one door on the street, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, the entrance from the Park Drive North, the, the doorway, um, from Park Drive North, so there's a ramp and it connects to the stairwell, uh, halfway up, I guess, on the first, coming up from the first floor?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify every, everything that I'm seeing, um, whereas I don't know, I don't know, I'm looking at two different stairwells in the lobby stairwell, and I see another stair A, can you just?
All right, so there's, so there isn't, there's an open stair within the lobby, that has thirteen risers. Then, within stairwell A, we have thirteen risers from the lower lobby to the upper lobby, but within the stairwell.
Mm-hmm. And then, so I'm trying to envision this going up to the, both of these continue up to the third?
So this goes, the, um, the open stair in the lobby, um, terminates at the lower lobby and the upper lobby, the stairwell continues up. Sure, over here, the stair, stair A continues over here.
Gotcha, where it terminates, if you can go back, the, uh, is that, am I seeing that the elevator, uh, is, opens at both ends?
Yes.
Okay, um, and the elevator, okay, so that, that opens at both ends on each floor, except for, except for the lower lobby. Just the first, yeah.
Uh, the elevator opens at the upper lobby and the lower lobby and on all floors.
No, I mean, the, the back, the rear of the elevator couldn't open on the, at the ground level.
It does, it opens at the, it opens at the ground level when you come into the lower lobby, and it opens at the upper lobby.
The rear of the elevator?
I think Mr. Cardoza was saying, is there two sets of doors on the elevator, back and front?
Yes, yes, there are.
Okay, I'm, I guess, that'll click for me in a second, then, um, the entrance on the opposite side for the utility and storage?
Mm-hmm.
So, as, as far as storage, what do, we're not talking residential item storage, or what, what do you mean?
No, it'll probably be, um, you know, shovels or things, or things of that nature for, um, for management, the tenants will not have access to the storage.
Okay, all right, and as far as the parking, I know you're gonna address that later, but I just wanna, this might be more of a question for management rather than, um, traffic flow, it, you got thirteen spots, twelve units, are you're assigning, I assume, one, one unit, uh, one parking space per unit, and then what's, what happens with this other lot, or does management have a spot, like, what's? Is this?
That will be fully addressed, yes.
Okay. Uh, looking at, well, I guess I see it in the back, the entrance to the stairwell from the concrete walk, that's at the, I guess that, that connects at the landing of the stairwell, the first landing? The rear stair?
Yes.
Uh, looking at, can we look at the roof?
Sorry.
So I, I guess I'm just having trouble use these, what were these two units, the ones with the, uh, the, I, I don't know what I'm looking at, is this like a brick?
Yeah.
What, what is that path and what it is?
All right, so the path, the path are walking pads, which we typically have on a, uh, like a TPL or an EPDM roof to prevent damage to the roof surface. And, um, over here, we have the elevator penthouse, which will, um, protrude through the roof a few feet. And then, uh, to the right, I have a rooftop unit. And then, um, back here, we have the roof hatch, as well as a second, um, rooftop unit.
Okay, you talk, when you say rooftop unit, you're talking about a mechanical?
That's correct, yes, yes, an AC system.
Gotcha, and when you say, uh, I didn't even remember, penthouse for the, talking about like, some light?
Uh, no, the pen, the, the elevator shaft requires a, um, a higher ceiling height than the rest of the floor, it's usually um, somewhere in the realm of around twelve feet, because of the system on the top of the elevator shaft.
Okay. Understand.
But it will be fully screened.
Understood, and you said, uh, the parapets that are, that surround the, uh, the, the top floor here, the, the roof, um, how tall is it?
Um, I don't have that exact measurement, uh, but they'll, they'll come up, um, a few feet.
Okay, all right, so then it's, it's pretty clear that the roof is not meant for residential use, it's purely for management and maintenance?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Um, and then, the, not, not much maintenance is required on the roof.
Okay, um, can you zoom out again, I, I'm just trying to make sure I recall everything here, uh. All right, I suppose that's it for now, thank you, Ms. Clint, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cardoza, Ms. Cafr, do you have any questions?
No questions right now, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cafr, uh, Mr. Hess, do you have any questions?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, actually, I have two things, uh, first is, you had asked about the definition of building height. The building height is measured from the mean ground elevation surrounding the building to the highest point of the roof. Uh, that's based on the definitions in the ordinance book.
Okay. Did you agree with, you agree with their measurement?
I, I had not checked it, normally, that's something the, uh, um, the planner looks at, because that's a variance issue, but I could take a look at it and see if I agree.
Okay.
All right.
And, uh, the second question, the, the actual question that I have relates to the, um, the units, the one-bedroom units with the dens, um, um, I think you had, uh, Ms. Clem, I think you had said earlier that it wasn't big enough to become a bedroom?
Um, yes.
But the question I had is, when I look at the dimensions, it shows it being, um, and, I mean, it shows it being seven foot ten inches by thirteen foot one, so I think that could be big enough to be a bedroom, and my question is, how would you keep that from being converted to a bedroom? Would there be, the restriction, would there be lease restrictions, or how would that be done?
Well, I testified that it would, to the dimensions, and that there is a five-foot entry to the room. Um, or to the, to the den, so there's no, there is no, um, you know, three-foot opening that you could simply add a door to. That is one element, and typically, it's, um, the, uh, the fire department will, will check them on occasion, and, um, that would also be within the lease as well, that you're not allowed to use it as a bedroom.
Okay, so that would be in the lease, I, I know, I saw the five foot that you're talking about, but that's actually not included in the, um, thirteen foot one-inch dimension, so that actually would increase the overall length to eighteen feet.
No, no, five feet in the other direction, um, the, the entryway into that den is five feet, um, on this page, is from top to bottom. Actually, a little larger than five feet, from that closet, back at the tub.
The other dimension is, is a closet, is the hall closet. That, that's the five.
No, but I'm talking about in, in front of the hall closet.
Right, it's, it's the hall closet, so, yeah.
It's not considered part of the den.
Right, that, and that's what I said, you, you're thirteen foot one inch doesn't include that area in front of the closet, so that, if that's five feet, you actually have a length up to the, um, to the entrance wall of eighteen feet. Eighteen foot one inches, correct?
Um, I don't believe it's five feet horizontally, I know that it is five feet vertically. I believe, I don't think that closet is five feet wide, it looks like smaller than a three-foot door just by eye. Maybe the whole closet is three feet wide, if that.
Okay, so then, instead of thirteen, maybe it's sixteen feet in that range, for the overall length in that area, uh, that's just one of my concerns, is that how do we keep that from being converted into a, uh?
I, I think, I think.
This is a bedroom.
Yeah, I think Mr. Hess, based on what Brittany was saying, she doesn't, she doesn't think from a layout standpoint, it's possible, but we could also obviously put a condition, put a restriction in the lease, I think there are others, other, um, impediments that we can place in, uh, if the board refuses to do that.
And, and actually, I would be more comfortable with some restrictions like that, okay?
And I, I also, I have to interject here, uh, that was not an incorrect statement, the fire department does not go into buildings into apartments, they.
Mrs. Moraldo, thank you.
The New Jersey Administrative Fire Code is, is prohibitive, it's, it's common areas and basements, so to say that the fire department is gonna do this, is not an accurate statement, so.
Okay, I've had, I've come across another towns.
Uh, well, that's.
Okay, I apologize.
Uh, yeah, it's not, it's not in the code, it's maybe property maintenance and others, but that's definitely not in the code. So, and they may do it, may not be correct, so, um, just wanna make sure. And while I have the floor, real quick about the elevators, does the elevator, is it large enough to handle a, um, a, um, a stretcher, if there was?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and then, and the elevator shaft is concrete?
It will either be concrete or concrete masonry units.
Okay, so, all right, okay.
Block.
And then, what about the trash, the trash, uh, units, is that gonna be cement, concrete also, or wood, or wood, wood framed?
Um, on the upper, are you talking about the, the chute?
Yeah, the trash chute, yes.
The chute is usually constructed of, um, of shaft wall, which is the, uh, CH channel, and one layer of one-inch gyp. They're, they're two-hour rated.
Okay, will there be sprinklers in there?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry for the interruption, thank you.
Welcome, uh, Ms. Cafr?
Um, I, I don't have any questions at this time, I think Mr. Cardoza has them, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Hazel?
Yes, uh, just a couple things, um, in, in terms of the, the height, uh, as indicated, based on, on, I'm, I'm based on the methodology that was employed to get this height, that is sound, basically, it's taking the height from the average grade as calculated on all sides, so that, that methodology is accurate.
Great, thank you.
I had another question about the front of the building, um, just looking at your rendering, the area where you're talking about having, uh, the glass opaked, um, did you think, uh, consider possibly doing some sort of a a canopy or, or, or something of that sort that would extend out, that would, uh, you know, essentially shield that, uh, view from the sidewalk and from the street frontage of that area inside?
In oning, yes, um, we have talked about it, it, it is something we could, we could do if the board was favorable to it.
Yeah, I, I think it will help in, you know, for want of a better way of putting it, uh, dressing up the front a little bit, that makes it look a little more, uh, you know? Um, I think that's all I have for now, uh, yes, let me also, uh, did you consider, and I'm, I'm not sure, I'm, I probably should really look into this more on the, whether, what, what the permissiveness of this within the city ordinances, but did you look at doing any, uh, in, in terms of the parking, did you look at, you know, I noticed, I just happened to notice, up the street, there is quite a bit of parking uh, for the apartment buildings, and so I'm not sure if that's how, uh, how much that's used, if it's basically at capacity now, or if there's a lot of, uh, empty spaces that, uh, basically, uh, there throughout the day and et cetera, did you look at the possibility of looking at shared space in any of those, uh, uh, properties surrounding this?
Yeah, Jerry, I'd have to ask the client or the, or the traffic expert on that, Brittany wouldn't have been the one that would have looked into that.
All right.
But, but it's a fair point, and we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I circle back, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, who's talking?
Cardoza.
Mr. Cardoza, absolutely.
All right, terrific, thank you, um, Ms. Clint, can I follow up on the, uh, elevator, I'm looking at the second floor, um, plan?
Yes.
Okay, so, I, you know, sorry to beat a dead horse, you, you mentioned that the elevator opens in the front and the rear on which floor now, so the, the second floor?
So, so this is the second floor, it's residential, it has one entrance on, we'll call it the front of the elevator.
And that would be the third floor? And that would be the third floor as well?
Right, and then on the ground level, that same entrance will be available at the lower lobby. But the upper lobby is seven feet, one and a quarter inches higher.
Okay.
So you go up these thirteen risers and you land seven feet higher, and this elevator will have a rear entry as well, and you will be able to exit or enter the elevator at that level.
Okay, and so then, oh, sorry.
For example, if you had a handicap, um, user here, they could come through the door, take the elevator down, access the mailbox, go back into the elevator and go up to their unit. Um, if someone came in through the front door, they could go into the elevator, come through to the upper lobby, or continue up to the floors above.
Well, then since you mentioned that, so the entrance to the upper lobby from the garage, it, the, the entrance to the lo- upper lobby from the walkway, from, from the ramp, from the street, is level with the garage?
So are you talking about this entry?
Which, where's?
On the side? On Park Drive North?
Oh, sorry, I'm, I think I'm enlarged, yeah, so from there to the upper lobby, so the door to the upper lobby, you're saying that is level with the garage?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so then, um, looking at the second floor, again, the elevator, that's the sa- it's same thing for the third floor? And then the office, storage slash office, same thing for the third floor?
Correct, yes.
So the, perfect, thank you, um.
You're welcome.
For the renderings, it looks like a lot of green on both, you know, in both the rear and on the side. Um, how much space are we talking about between, for the, between the neighbors and, and?
Um, I think the civil engineer will get into, uh, the exact on that, um, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Twelve, you want me to answer that, or?
Well, I think you could give a generic answer for, for Mr. Cordova, that.
Yeah, I mean.
It range, in the re- in the rear, Brittany, it ranges from eight point one six feet, I believe, to about thirteen feet in the rear, correct?
Yes, eight point one, oh, sorry, eight point one six, um, in the corner over here where the property narrows down, and then back here where the stair is, it is, I think you said twelve?
Yeah.
Twelve point three, two feet at the, um, from this edge of the stair tower to the property line. Um, and you are correct, this grass would be smaller because in fact, there is another building here.
Right, right, and then on the, uh, the other side, um,
Hmm.
I, I don't know.
In the front, this is, this is the accurate landscaping, I guess there's artistic with, uh, the trees, maybe there, maybe there's a few less trees in reality on the adjacent properties, but the, um, the, uh, landscaping shown is as, as true to, um, the landscaping plan that is proposed within the civil set.
Under- understood, I meant the other edge, I don't know what to call it, uh, I'm gonna say the left, but.
Back here?
Yeah, between that, between that, that, uh, end of the building and the neighbors on that side, how much space? Roughly.
Yes, I think, um, I know we're gonna have, um, some greenery on the top of this rock wall, which will be discussed with the landscape plan, or not rock wall, the, um, the retaining wall, and, um, the adjacent property here, uh, um, I believe has some landscaping in the front as well.
Do you know the distance?
Uh, I do not have the distance at this exact corner, but a little further back where it's tighter, it's, um, five point two two feet.
Okay, so it, really, so, okay.
So it's a little wider at that, at that, um, corner, um, maybe somewhere around six or seven feet.
Okay. Alright, I'm, yeah.
The building is square and the property line is angled.
Okay, I'm just envisioning it because that's where the entrance for the storage and utility is located.
Hmm, yes.
Okay, so then, can we, can we, can you go back out to the, um, image that shows, I guess, the first floor? So, to, is since, since there's an elevation, um, you know, to the left of the main entrance, to get to the utility and storage, the uh, maintenance crew is gonna have to walk around the back of the building to, or, or hop that, that, you know, elevation here every time they want to access?
Presumably, they would use the interior door, um, the exterior door is provided if needed for egress.
Okay, okay, the interior door from the garage?
Yes, that is meant to be the, um, the commonly used door.
Understood, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Those are all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, I have a question, is the sidewalk narrower on the, uh, southerly side of the building than on the northerly side of the building, based on the retaining wall?
Um, what, what I can answer on that is that, um, the retaining wall on the existing property used to go all the way to the property line, and we have brought it back five feet to the face of the building.
Right.
And, um, we actually had proposed, uh, mulch or grass in between the doorways, and based on our review with SBRAB, we extended the sidewalk up against the building. I know it will be addressed more, more thoroughly in civil, sorry to keep giving that answer.
Not a problem, not a problem, so at this time, it is now ten fifty.
Oh, Chairman, I have another question before you end.
Mayor McCartney.
Please, thank you, so Mr. Cordova's question was the, about the elevators, was the first time I mentioned I've heard ADA compliance. I just want to be reassured that the building is ADA compliant.
Yes, that was part of my testimony, that it will be fully ADA compliant, every space within the building is ADA compliant.
Alright, thank you, and I wanted to thank Mr. Hazel for bringing up the idea about the canopy. Because again, along our Main Street corridor, we have a Thomas Edison National Historic Park, we recently designated Trinity Church as a historic site. We have Our Lady of Lord's Church, over one hundred years old, Washington Street School, over one hundred years old. And again, this, um, building where Mr. Hazel had mentioned canopies, any way to dress, dress this up to make it look more classic or not an institution, that would be my question, and the, my question is about really the trash room, if the trash room is going to be accessible for all units, will there be a private hauler, and how will they access all of the trash in that trash room?
Yeah, Brittany, can you just reiterate that so it's clear?
Sure, yes, um, so the trash, the tenants will have access to the trash collection room on each upper floor. They will use a trash chute, and their, their bags of trash will go down the chute and land in the trash termination room on the, on the ground floor. There will also be recycle bins, uh, in the, in that trash room on each floor, that tenants will fill, and the, uh, maintenance personnel will bring those recycle bins down, most likely via the elevator, down to the trash room on a regular schedule, and it will all collect, um, down in the trash room. Um, I stated that trash pickup will be by private hauler coming along Main Street, and the, um, the maintenance personnel will, will facilitate the, um, the removal of the containers into the bin, they will not be sitting and waiting on the curb.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer fully?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, well, ladies and gentlemen, it's now ten fifty-three, we're gonna have public comment at our next meeting.
Mr. Chair, before we go, I did have some follow-up questions, if that's alright?
Right ahead, Council President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so, Ms. Clem, you, you stated that the hauler for the trash will not be making a U-turn on Main Street. Um, I would expect that they wouldn't, but I don't know that we can, you know, certify that they won't make a U-turn there, and that is a very, uh, congested corridor, so just wanted to add that commentary. It's impossible for us to know, um, whether or not they will make a U-turn on Main Street, uh, after collecting the garbage there, especially if that's the last stop on their route, and they're not going anywhere up, for down Main Street. Um, I do have a question with regard to the recycling, you said that there's a chute on each level, um, for the trash, and the residents will put their trash down the chute, and I assume a superintendent of some sort will uh, load those up into the bins and take them out. Is it the resident's responsibility to separate the recyclables? Or would, is there a separate chute for recyclables, or do they have to walk those down to the trash room and put the recyclables in there?
No, Mr. Council President, I'll reiterate, um, I, I thought we were clear, so I apologize if it wasn't clear. So in the trash room on each floor, the resident will bring their trash, like you would put your trash in the garbage, and then there'll be a separate bin for recycling, that the residents will put, you know, bottles and cans and cardboard and stuff like that. And then the building management will take the cardboard or recycling items from each floor, bring them into the tra- into the trash room on the first floor, put them in a separate recycling bin that the private hauler will take when they, when they come to pick up.
Got it, I, I didn't hear that earlier.
No problem, yeah, no problem.
You know where it's. With regard to the E V stations in the garage, it looks like there are two. Uh, is that right, there are two electric vehicle charging stations?
That's correct, because we have to have the ADA space also have the ability to have an E V charger.
Got it, and, and do we know what type of chargers they will be?
No, no, that's usually specked out later, I think we have to run the conduit and show it there, but the actual charger, I don't believe that that's picked out till construction.
Got it, and, and so essentially, there will be one electric vehicle charging station for non, uh, ADA residents.
Right, the, the way this, the, the statute sets it up is that the, based on the number of units here, we only need one for the, um, I'll call it the, for a regular E V, and then one for the ADA. But in this situation, we could avoid having multiple chargers, we could probably have one structure that has two, you know, outlets that allow you to plug in, so it doesn't take up as much room.
Got it, so, so if there are multiple E V vehicles in this, in the garage, th- that E V space can't be designated for a resident, that's gonna be a, a, a space only to charge and then put your car back where it needs to be?
No, so somebody would, would, with an E V car would just get that space to charge their space.
And if there were more than one E V car in the building?
Right, so if there's more than, for example, more than one person has an electric vehicle, either one or two things can occur, and we can discuss this, I've seen it where you just leave it the way it is, which is per state code, or you could pre-wire the, some of the other areas in the building, and have the flexibility in the future of running an E V charger in the event the tenants require.
Got it, um, alright, my last, uh, my last, uh, question's kinda like a comment, I'm picking up on, uh, what Mr. Hazel said earlier. In the rendering that shows the corner of Park Drive North, uh, and Main Street, uh, that one, uh, there's no, there are no cars shown parked on the street below the garage. Uh, as it is now, there are cars parked there, I don't, uh, know who, uh, on the township side can address this, but I don't know what our ordinance is with regards to parking there. But if the desire is to have no parking there, uh, that might require a change, uh, in the parking rules on Park Drive North. Um, alright, I, I think that's it for me, um, I think the, uh, someone else is going to address where the retail parking will be. Uh, yeah, that's it for me, thank you, gentlemen, uh, ladies.
Thank you, um, Council President, it is now ten fifty-eight. So we are going to, uh, hold this over to our next meeting on July tenth. Does that work for, uh, all of you guys?
Yeah, I'll just, let me just, uh, con- confer with everyone, Mr. Chairman, just give me one second.
Good, okay, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, while they're conferring, just real quick, uh, to answer Council President Rutherford's question, I think on that.
It's morale though, go right ahead.
That, that picture, that rendering they have from the garage door down to Main Street, if that's within fifty feet of the, um, of the, um,
Corner.
Corner there, that's, that's, uh, prohibited any, prohibited parking anyway on the state law.
E- even on a one-way?
I, I believe so, but I think it's, I think it's fifty feet, that's what the police chief has told me in the past, I can confirm that with him, but I, I'm pretty sure it's fifty feet.
Fifty feet from his, fifty feet from his stop sign, twenty-five from a crosswalk.
Right.
There's a crosswalk there, so.
I, I, I'm not the part of Mr. Klein, I think he knows a little better.
It's twenty-five from a crosswalk.
And as you go off that block, I was there today, there's no parking on that side of the street, all the parking is on the opposite side of the street.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, that date works fine.
Fantastic, okay, so we are all in agreement. So PB twenty-four dash O six, Main Street Holding LLC, uh, will be carried to the next planning board meeting on July tenth, twenty twenty-four.
With, with no further notice, correct?
With no further notice, exactly, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all, the next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, July tenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven thirty P M via Zoom, don't go anywhere. There is a special meeting I am announcing tonight for the West Essex Highlands application. Again, a special meeting on July sixteenth and July seventeenth. It will start at six o'clock and be over at eleven o'clock each night, and the, uh, location will be announced within accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, um, shortly, on our website and in the newspaper. And I need a, I make a motion to adjourn, and I have a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman's seconds, all in favor?
Uh, eyes above the nose.
Oh, the eyes are definitely above the nose, thank you, everybody, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.